Morning. Today, we're resuming our budget hearing and we're starting out with Public Works, which I chair. And Director Hornstein is with us today. What we'll do, I guess, first is have our budget director have a little quick overview of things, and then we will turn it to Director Hornstein, and then questions for council members. So, thanks for being here.
Thank you. The mission of the Department of Public Works is to maintain the city's assets related to accessing public streets, parks, facilities, rehabilitating public structures, and maintaining the city's natural environment. Provide support to other departments, administer a solid waste and recycling system that promotes a litter-free environment, and ensure public safety responding to weather-related events. A quick overview of DPW. The Department of Public Works is divided into the following bureaus: Administration, Operations, Environmental Services, and Facilities. Some position summaries for the 2023 budget. There's an increase of nine positions for a total of 26 full-time positions in the Bureau of Administration, which comes to an overall increase of $579,444, which is 53%. The Bureau of Operations has an increase in the mayor's 2023 budget of 55 positions for a total of 321 positions, which is an increase of about $2.4 million, or 18%. And a summary of non-personnel changes for the Bureau of Operations. An increase of $538,000, which is mostly attributed to $500,000 for added vehicle rentals for winter operations. The Bureau of Environmental Services has 179 full-time positions in the mayor's 2023 budget, which is actually a decrease of one position. The Bureau of Facilities has a, oh, and their overall has a $17,000 decrease in non-personnel expenses. And then the Bureau of Facilities has addition of one full-time employee for a total of 91 full-time positions. Summary of non-personnel changes for that. There's a $2.1 million increase in non-personnel expenses. $25,000 decrease for workforce training. $1 million increases for electric, for utilities. $300,000 for natural gas, $300,000 for water, and $21,369 increase in land and building leases. $326,000 less budgeted for maintenance costs, and $189,000 less for budgeted materials. So, jumps out there is the increased cost for utilities. And as far as capital projects go, there is the $44,000 lease contract payment to the Bob O'Connor Golf Course. Facility improvements for city facilities totals $11,700,000. Facility improvements for public safety facilities is almost $11 million. Facility improvements for recreation and senior centers is totaling just over $7 million. Park reconstruction is $8.6 million. The park reconstruction with the parks tax funding is $13,426,497. And there is $2 million for RAD park reconstruction projects.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McDevitt. And now I will turn it over to Director Hornstein, and what do you got for us, Chris?
Let me share my screen on Zoom for those watching at home. And we'll go over this very quickly. So, our agenda here is very quick. I want to just go over 2022 very at a high level. I want to talk a little bit about our internal partners and like how we do coordinated work and note with other city departments. And then I want to, you know, highlight some things that we've requested in this budget that I think are apt and pertinent. So, one of the big things that we did this year was we instituted a real-time safety system. So, we trained all levels of management from foreman all the way up to myself, as well as project managers. Now, everybody's been trained. This was implemented in August. This gives any worker in the department the opportunity to raise a safety concern and incidents with the goal of quick resolution whenever possible. These are all tracked and logged in a database, and we review this database daily. To date, since August, we've had over 150 safety incidents. In solving derout with staff, we've identified some very basic improvements that are reflected in this budget and beyond. And we're going to continue to monitor this and use this to help guide our thinking in terms of how we address operations. But some of the things that I wanted to point out, that staff raises issues that we were able to activate just in this past year. You know, we've identified better PPE and safety equipment for staff, better practices for preventive maintenance of equipment. So, the things that we do have, we're keeping them off, trying to, you know, keeping them operational longer, which is critical for us, but also reduces a safety concern that staff has raised. And then we also have best practices for incorporating any of the staff safety concerns related to their work into capital projects moving forward. So, a lot of really good things there. As I always like to say, you know, all of our frontline workforce is the most valuable resource that we have. Every time somebody gets hurt, injured on the job, that means they're not able to perform work. So, I'm intent, and it's one of my top priorities, to make sure that, you know, as much as possible, we try to keep every one of our workers safe out there. Vehicles and equipment. As I mentioned, as part of that real-time safety system, it allowed us to identify some preventative best practices, which we've begun to implement. There is some concerns over the overall state of some of our equipment that's beyond its useful life that impact operations in 2022. As you can see, this picture on the screen, this is our tiger mower. This is the mower that we use, has a reciprocating arm. It's the one that we use to mow along city streets, on hillsides, hard-to-reach places. We ended 2022 with one out of seven of those operational. When that happens, and we do the best that we can, we have to send out staff to do that work manually. And so, what might take several hours may take, one person, several hours, may take several persons, several days. So, that has a big impact on the types of services that we can provide. Relief vacuums and streets alone, they ended with one out of three operational. In the park side, it was a little bit better, but we still lost several pieces of equipment there as well. Our high lifts, these are front-end loaders that are used to load salt and other materials. We ended 2022 with five out of the seven operational. So, we'll be leasing two to support us in our winter operations this year. Beyond is an outline of equipment that's past its useful life. I'd like to point out, backhoes also use to load salt and other materials. We have two out of four that are operational. Street sweepers. We have three out of 10 that are beyond their useful life. Chipper's that forestry would use to grind up the material that they cut down during their operations. We have four out of five that are past their useful life. Stump grinders, large and small, we have four out of five that are past their useful life. So, you know, we expect those things to go offline sometime in the near future. I want to call out some of our internal partners that we work with to help make us go. First, I want to give, you know, much respect and appreciation for our public safety. All the bureaus, and to particular though, this year, I think police has really done an outstanding job working with us. You know, people always forget that Public Works are our first responders with them, and we rely on them, and they rely on us, and we very much appreciate their leadership and their assistance, and we're happy to provide that. The innovation and performance, they were really critical for us in standing up the real-time safety system. And they continue to work with us on a variety of improvements, but I wanted to call out that particular system as a really beneficial improvement for the department. Permits, licensing, and inspections. You know, we work in hand with them to address clean and liens. Without their great work on the upfront, it would be difficult, if not impossible, for us to do work on the backend. And they've been instrumental with us in transitioning enforcement over to the quality-of-life ticketing that council addressed this year. We also work with the Department on Finance to help address vacant and abandoned lots, so we work with them as well. And we also have great outstanding partnerships with DOMI. And we're going to get to some of those things and how they impact our budget requests. So, the program highlights that I wanted to talk about, you know, the real-time safety system has impacted a lot of these things. The requested personnel increases that we have here impact cleaning liens, our abilities to do illegal dump cleanup, it impacts our abilities to do enforcement, it impacts our ability to do snow removal, and it impacts our ability to provide training and development for our staff. This also impacts our vehicles and equipments for rentals, and particularly parks equipment. Regarding clean and liens, as of Thanksgiving, for privately-owned property, so this is privately-owned property that PLI has cited and gone through a cleaning process, we have 258 open requests. Those are requests that we have not been able to address. So, to get to this backlog, it takes two steps. The first step is an initial cleanup. On average, it takes about two and a half days, couple pieces of equipment, a couple people. Based on this backlog, it's going to take two crews, about eight persons, from March to November to just address the outstanding backlog, and that assumes that there's no new clean and liens, which I think we can reasonably appreciate that there will be new ones coming in. In addition to that, once we have cleaned up the lot, you know, we need to regularly maintain it. So, that needs to happen every two weeks. That requires another additional 12 persons just to address that backlog. Now, that's for privately-owned property. We work with Finance, with some of their contracted vendors, to do coordinated maintenance on the publicly-owned lot. So, one of the things that we're going to seek to improve next year is when the lot is in such a condition that's beyond the capability of the contractor to clean it up, because it's so overgrown and there's so much trash, we would provide that initial clean service to get it into a place where they could routinely maintain. For enforcement inspections, so we will be transitioning our work from PLI for the enforcement of weeds and debris. This relates to the quality-of-life ticketing. So, this has additional inspectors along with some supervision. Additionally, there's the environmental enforcement coordinator position in Environmental Services, and that is dedicated to outreach and coordination around the plastic bag ban and then help with enforcement of that. We talk about inspection, it's not just about enforcement. There are other inspection services that Public Works does that are critical to our operations. One is illegal dumping. But the other ones are, we inspect for construction. Now, this is not like a permit compliance, this is for contract compliance. This is to make sure that contractors are doing what we ask them to do. And then we're also piloting a park maintenance inspection program to help activate and be more efficient with our parks maintenance this year. So, the supervision is needed, it's necessary to balance out the task load. All the tasks are demand-based, right? So, if a citizen calls and complains about a quality-of-life issue regarding weeds and debris, you know, we need to respond to that, we need to balance that out with the demand for when we need staff on site to watch contractors. So, it's not always predictable, so we do need, we do need a supervisor there. And our plan is to grow this program in the out years and expand it to a variety of different ways where we can improve service. Regarding snow, so the current weather projections show there will be no snow in 2023, so we're going to cancel that.
Let's skip right through that, that's fine.
I'm glad to laugh. Glad I got a laugh. So, again, I just want to kind of reiterate how snow treatment works. Currently, as of 2022, our current goal is, you know, 95% plus of our streets are treated. That means salt and/or plow within 24 hours after we begin. We must follow a hierarchy, we cannot be everywhere at once. That starts with, you know, emergency response routes to hospitals, steep streets, primary routes, mains thoroughfares, and other places of note. The projected staff level increase that we have proposed in the Bureau of Operations, so 15 drivers, 41 laborers, that's 56 total, that supports reducing this goal from 24 hours to 10 hours. Treated does not mean clean. I want to be very clear about that, I've been clear about it in the past, but I'm going to be clear about it again here. Treated does not mean clean bare street in 24 hours. The salt breaks the bond between the snow and the road. It's imperative that we treat everywhere, it allows the follow-up work to happen much faster. The technology is critical for snow, from our perspective. The DABL and ADLS, the data that we have from our vehicle tracking and from Skyhawk, it enables us to project all those things and much more. You know, again, I have to say, our frontline workers' experience is always the most valuable input, so we're doing any type of technology improvements hand-in-glove with them. This isn't about controlling them, this is about, you know, helping learn and teach, and learn from each other. And then we use the technology to continue to conduct experiments to improve performance throughout the year. For the vehicles and equipment, you know, we will, our plan is to lease 14 vehicles to support snow. This will commence in January upon council's authorization of this budget. So, this is a direct benefit that's going to happen this year. So, our current snow equipment, this is as of November 11th. We have 95 out of 113 fully capable snow trucks that are operationally ready. 13 are down for maintenance, four are at the vendor for extended maintenance. And we have 26 other partially capable trucks. Either they have a plow but no spreader, or a spreader and no plow, and we utilize those resources as well. For parks maintenance, I just want to be clear, our parks maintenance practice is based on standard service approach. It's just tasking frequency for every park. Basically, what this means is ball field should be cut, grass should ideally be cut twice a week, litter should be picked up every day, it's regularly scheduled maintenance. So, the proposed staffing improvements that we have here, this helps us achieve a more consistent standard everywhere. So, this is less reactive, less trying to balance out where we can't get some things. The vehicles and equipment, so we had proposed two Rat Packers in 2022, this helps us be more efficient. That's less loads that have to go get dumped, there's less travel back and forth, they're more on the street getting litter out. Again, I have to say that equipment downtime has a significant impact on delivery of the standard service. Every time a piece of equipment goes down for prolonged maintenance, it means that more workers are needed to perform that simple task. So, we're going to have an increased focus in 2023 on the skill development and the preventive equipment maintenance practices to make sure that what we have is operational longer and is better cared for. And we've identified what those are, so we're ready to activate that. For training and development portion, so we want to invest time in training at all levels of management, staff, and the frontline staff. It takes time to develop certain skills, particularly snow removal. On snow removal, it takes about eight to 10 times a year that we have snow. So, you only have eight or 10 opportunities to show what you know, and city streets are extremely difficult to plow. This isn't like plowing a highway or a parking lot. They are steep, they're difficult to navigate, and so that training involves ride-alongs with experienced drivers, observation of them driving. It takes a good season or two. So, workers in the budget this year, you know, at best, we will train them up, as soon as we can get them in, at best, we would train them up, but they're not going to have a substantial impact for the months of January through March. The additional staff that we've asked for allows us to also coordinate and explore opportunities for partnership outside the city, so that we can leverage best practices and create pipelines for employment. We think this is going to be critical for us going forward, because we're getting multiple requests now from DOMI to help pilot in-house installation of traffic calming. We will, we would love to support them, but we need to develop the skill set in tandem with them, and then deliver it. So, those things are going to take time. And then there's also just a massive amount of data that we have, both in Cartograph and in Skyhawk. Cartograph being our tasks, Skyhawk being our vehicle movement, that needs to be analyzed so that we can be really thoughtful about how we can continue to make operational improvements within the department. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Director. And I just want to say, I think it's a good thing that this is, that only two council members are here, because typically, we're here because if there's issues with a department or so. So, it says a lot about you and your leadership. You know, I follow it closely because we meet often, so, so, thanks for the work you do, and let's see, who am I going to begin with?
Speak for yourself, I got a lot of.
You got a lot of questions, all right.
That's what I said, it's usually you're here if you do, so, so I'll turn it over to Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I appreciate the collaboration, everything that we've been able to accomplish together. So, I just want to go through some of these new positions here.
Absolutely.
Can you explain, just go right down the line on our sheet, do you have our sheet?
Can I get a copy of it? Thank you.
I can.
What page are you on? This page, I got you.
Data analyst?
Yes.
That's not in your presentation, right?
That is, that person's part of the training and development program, so that's.
Maybe it'll just help me understand where it fits into the.
Yeah, yeah, that person will be part of the training and development program. And so, we need to, in conjunction with a real-time safety system, we have copious amounts of data in Cartograph and in Skyhawk that need to be analyzed. It's a, it's a full-time job. Right now, that analysis mostly consists of myself and a few other select staff when we have available time, but we need a more directed, thoughtful approach, and that's a full-time person.
Logistics manager?
That is a person to help manage all of our vehicles and equipment. We need somebody that's going to interface with Fleet Vehicle Services as well as Heavy Equipment Division, somebody to help manage this asset class.
What department was it, the fire department that was looking at something like that, right?
Well, if I could chime in, logistics manager, I think my office, we put in for that request, I believe.
But you were looking at that for like snow removal?
Yes, that's why I have questions about it, I'll wait for my turn, but, yeah.
All right. But I like that, because I do have a lot of questions about, a lot of questions. I have a question about the vehicles, I'll get to that there. So, training and development coordinator?
Yes, so that's coordinating, that, that person is to help both internally with the tracking of the training and development, as well as coordinating externally with a variety of partnerships that we can see. CCAC, Partners for Work, the unions, to provide a variety of different opportunities, training opportunities for our staff, both frontline and, and, you know, administrative, to develop skill sets and expand our capabilities.
The inspection supervisor?
That's to, that's to manage the inspection team, which will consist of the anti-litter inspectors, inspectors ones, inspector twos. I'm going to note that the inspector, some of the existing inspectors moved from the Bureau of Operations and Facilities, but that's to grow the functions for both the enforcement of anti-litter as well as standing up the piloting of the parks maintenance program.
Okay, so this inspection supervisor will oversee two anti-litter inspectors, and then these other five inspectors?
Correct.
So, the anti-litter inspectors are new.
Anti-litter inspectors?
That's a new concept.
Those were previously in the Bureau of Environmental Services.
And how would I know what they're doing previously? Like what, like what would, they're not new positions, you're saying? You're just transferring them?
They're, yeah, they're positions that existed in DPW and the Bureau of Environmental Services, but they transferred them in the budget.
So, what was the work they were doing over in refuse?
It was the anti-litter inspection, enforcing illegal dumping.
Okay, the illegal dumping, okay.
Yeah, and then we're going to expand that offering to do the quality-of-life ticketing for them as well, along with the inspectors one and the inspectors two, the new additional positions that you see.
So, you're going to do the quality-of-life ticketing with, in, if the, if the legislation passes, or you're planning to do that regardless?
We're planning to do that as the legislation passes. We believe there's enough work there now, what we have, to support.
Walk me through that, like what would you, like what would you be ticketing?
There's a variety of litter and helping in enforcement with, even without the quality-of-life tipping, we can still provide the assistance to PLI. We would utilize them for a variety of illegal dumping enforcement.
Like litter on someone's property, or?
Correct.
Like private property, litter?
Along with the enforcement of the variety of things, like early set-out, things related to environmental services.
Is that an issue, early set-out?
Not so much an issue, I'm thinking more about.
Well, anyway.
The variety of situations that come up in environmental services that are dumpster bags that sit there for too long, those, those type of things that rise to a safety concern.
Yeah, I know, my district with all, with their different lots that are vacant and abandoned, there's dumping on them, and that's where I see something that can be done. Either, we typically just do the clean and lean with the property, so that we can get that back in shape. I don't have many complaints, maybe they all come to you about early set-out. So, I, anyway, I do have concerns just in general about the legislation and how that's all going to take place, but I'll, I'll figure that out, I'll figure that out at council. But just wanted to know what, what you were going to move, if you were going to move forward without the legislation.
Yeah, we would definitely, we would still move forward. This aligns with our, this staffing aligns with our gold plan, which was done independent of the quality-of-life ticketing. And so, it still aligns with kind of our mission. We see the quality-of-life ticketing just kind of folding into what we currently plan to do.
Okay, yeah, I obviously have more complaints just about like litter on main streets and stuff, you know, to like beautify the neighborhood, not, I don't get complaints about people talking about others that have, you know, litter on their property. So, I don't, I'd just be, I'd be hesitant to invest in something that's going to give someone a ticket because there's a, you know, a Coke bottle that's on their property or something.
Understood. No, I think.
I think it would have to be something pretty egregious, like where we get entered into a clean and lean.
Yes, and I, and I believe the legislation contemplates those types of protections for citizens.
Yeah.
And it would be our operational position that we, you know, we wouldn't want to unduly burden some, someone. In our internal discussions, we've all been very sensitive to the fact that, you know, some of these are people that need assistance, and, and part of that program is to, you know, connect them with assistance when possible.
So, I'm definitely familiar with the, you know, I work with Sean Wigel typically whenever, you know, there's an issue with, you know, maybe it's someone's property, but someone's dumping right there. You probably know the exact case, you know? Or if, you know, some issue with trash. So, would this all go through, like where in DPW would this go through?
This will go through, that portion will go through the inspection team and coordination with Environmental Services.
Interesting. And was that Bureau of Operations before? Okay. And then the communications specialist, who was that? Or who is it? That same individual's moving over to the mayor's office?
Correct.
And who's the communications person specialist right now?
Emily Bourne.
Okay. And then the constituent services coordinator, who's that?
That was Giselle Batant.
She's going back over to the mayor's office. Okay, so in terms of the fleet, it's just, quite honestly, it's too many, too many moving parts to keep track of. So, because we put all this money into, you know, buying vehicles through ARPA funding previously, like $17 million?
There's green fleet improvements in ARPA funding.
No, there was like 17, that's what I'm talking about, there's all these different scenarios that we've got in. So, we were waiting on the manufacturer to do that, and that's why we rented all these vehicles last year. Okay, so you're familiar with the delay, and what was that? That was the?
That, that delay was related to supply chain issue.
Do we have those vehicles?
We have some of those vehicles.
And how many were we expecting in that load?
I don't have the top number. Uh, I don't have the top number off top.
It was like seventeen.
It was like seventeen, I believe we received, we had some issues with the quality of the receipt, but, um. I believe it's twelve new vehicles were in the pipeline for operations. Um, and believe the environmental services ones have not yet been delivered. Um, some of the twenty twenty-two orders have been canceled by the manufacturer. Um, so we need to replace order at, um, an increased cost.
Okay, so we got twelve from that.
That's my, that is my understanding.
And we're still waiting on the other five?
Yes. I don't know.
And then we rented, we rented, how many, how, we rented, I don't know, twelve last year?
Nah, we rented six last year, yeah. I think it was six to eight. I believe it ended up being six.
And is that lease ended?
That lease has ended. We ended that lease at the end of March.
So the twelve we have will fill that gap?
Uh, yes, but I have to point out that like our average age of vehicle is still above ten. So the average age, uh, the useful life of our vehicles is tracked to ten years.
Okay.
Um, so our average age is above ten years, which means that like an ideal situation is between, you know. Five and six years, average age. Um, so right now we're about twice as old as we need to be, and that impacts the reliability, um, of the equipment. Um, and so the leased vehicles in my estimation are gonna be necessary to, you know, ensure continuity of snow ops during the season.
So. Twelve, the lease is gone, we got the twelve, and you're saying that. There's even more gap to fill, and how are you planning to fill it?
I'm with the lease.
Another lease?
Yes.
And we're gonna see that at the council table back again here soon, or we already, was that in the authorization last year to re-up it? I'm, I'm just looking at anyone. So we did this lease, well, maybe, I mean, we didn't see it at the council table yet, so we're gonna see another lease come for more vehicles.
Correct.
We're buying more vehicles through the parks tax funds.
Specific to the parks.
For DPW?
Yes. Sorry, I want to clarify. We leased six and bought six. Um, so we have the five hundred thousand. In the budget is strictly for leasing. That would support leasing fourteen.
Fourteen this year?
Correct.
So we're gonna do another lease for fourteen?
Correct.
So that's double than what we did last year?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then, I don't have the breakdown here, but all the trucks that are coming over to DPW from the parks tax fund, fund. How many are, how many is that? Like is that over twenty? Look like a, they're all mixtures of.
There's a mixture of tractors.
Is that where the Tigers coming from?
No. Tigers exclusive to streets.
And, and that's gonna be. You know, you put that on the slide, where's that gonna come from? Is that gonna, is that budgeted here?
That's out of the capital budget. Via the ELA.
And some of the ELA. Okay. So how are we gonna get to a place where we're not renting? Every year? Man, cause I wanna trust your judgment in terms of, you know, you think you need twice as much.
We need to make.
Help last year?
Absol- absolutely, without question it helped. Um, greatly looking forward it again this year. Um, if we wanna get to a place where we don't have to lease vehicles and we wanna reduce maintenance costs, then we need to invest in new vehicles. Period and point blank. We need to invest at a level consistently. So that we can reduce our average age from over ten years to five or six. Um, so that's, to be frank, that will cause a significant pain, um, in the first couple of years, but. You know, and I would defer to Brandon Walton, um, for those details, but I, I would expect that, um. As your average age of your fleet reduces, that your amount of money spent on vehicle maintenance will reduce as well. Um, so you could considerable savings there that could be realized.
How do we fit that in, in the future if we're gonna continue to invest in, I mean, obviously we need to invest in the fleet? How do we fit that into the, to the capital budget, um, on DPW's side so that we're not continually drawing down the? Parks Tax Trust Fund, which, you know, I mean, the idea would be that. I think, you know.
I don't think we're drawing down the Parks Tax Trust Fund to support snow operations. That's, that's an incorrect and inaccurate statement.
But you oversee parks.
I do.
Yeah, so.
Well, let's look at those vehicles, let's look at those, that list in the capital budget then.
I guess that the, the.
May I?
Yes, you may.
Um, currently, and just as a reminder, we will be talking about the Parks Tax Trust Fund this afternoon. But just for the purpose of this discussion, there is one inspector car for, in the Parks Tax, two Rat Packers. Five agricultural tractors, eight hybrid pickup trucks, um, eight one ton dump trucks. Uh, DPW Skid steer in the Parks Tax Trust Fund.
Yeah, I mean, I'm also all for supporting, um. You know, making sure that all the vehicles are working, the parks are being taken care of in terms of maintenance. The only concern is that. You know, um, people who voted for the, for that fund. Um, they have, they have the understanding that, cause that's what they've been reaching out about, is that. Well, if we continue to pull money from that fund and, um, don't form some sort of partnership with. An entity like the Conservancy that's gonna raise money based on capital that they can expect, that we're. You know, we're actually, um, hurting the situation and, and in some respects since, you know, we could. The, the idea, I guess, was always that some of this money could be, you know, positioned, um, at an entity where they could fundraise. And get matching dollars to, uh, to invest more in our parks. So I was always interested in that, cause it's always good to, you know, partner with an outside organization that's gonna. Um, you know, bring more money to the table. And so I'm just wondering how we move forward in the future, so that we're not continually drawing down, because I, I'm only asking you this question, cause. Obviously, you know, you're gonna have a data, the logistics manager, you know, you're gonna have them in place. You have these, uh, operating budget, capital budget requests. I imagine, you know, unless it's, I'm not sure where, where these are, you know, where this model came from, but I'm trying to understand. Like how we can fit this into the, the normal capital budget in the future.
Oh, I, I think one of the things that we need to understand department wide is a lot of, you know. Obviously, as I pointed out, deferred maintenance and equipment across bureaus. Um. And whenever that happens, that has a significant impact on, on operations and maintenance. Um, I think one of the. Big pieces of dialogue that we saw that we were responsive to, um, in the public regarding the Parks Tax was the, just the. Increased desire for maintenance. Um, the number one, um, request on maintenance was for, uh, litter pickup and debris. Uh, the two Rat Packers are necessary to make that operation as efficient as possible. Um, I think the other piece of it is, um, in these early years, um, for the Parks Tax and Parks related equipment that you see here. Um, you know, we are projecting a, you know, a capital expenditure higher than normal, so that we can right age. The fleet of vehicles and equipment, um, and by twenty twenty-four. Um, I would project that that amount would be dropped down to a sustainment level. Um, so slightly reduced funding.
Yeah, what I think is interesting about, you know, cause I've seen this, um. You know, this narrative of the, you know, the number one thing was maintenance. I was at those meetings, um, several of them. And I understood that maybe the data shows differently, maybe the questionnaire shows differently. I understood that, um, and people's eyes like glowed when they heard this, that we were gonna hire. That that maintenance was tied to forty more workers. Uh, that will be, you know, increased, and then I guess they had the idea that the workers would be the ones that would increase that main, they would. They would be the ones that would, um, increase that maintenance. Obviously, they, those workers ride in a truck or use, sometimes use a vehicle to do that. Um, but, you know, I, I don't know, just being at those meetings, it sound like. They had the ideas of the, the simple maintenance, whether it's trash, whether it's, um. Well, it's not simple, the, the mowing of several acres of, of park. Um, so all, all that, all the different stuff. I always hear there's equipment involved, but. Um, you know, we, we only talked about the workers at the, at those meetings, or at least that's what was presented to them. So I think it's just interesting to take that note as well. So do we come up to forty, uh, increased workers on, and DPW parks?
Yes, in twenty twenty-three, we show forty workers.
Awesome.
Um, and also some additional seasonal staff as well to augment.
Okay, great. Alright, I don't have any further questions. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson, and, uh, let it be known that we were joined by Councilwoman Strasburger and our Madam President. Councilwoman Teresa Kiel Smith, and, um, if you are, um, ready, Councilwoman Strasburger, we'll go to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you, Director Hornstein, and I apologize for missing your, um, your presentation, but. Appreciate that you're here, appreciate everything you do and with your department. It's quite a bit. We have many bureaus to, um, to discuss, so. I will start with Bureau of Administration, um, and I see that there's workforce training and additional workforce training cost. And I was just curious what the workforce training will look like. What's that going to focus on?
Uh, that's gonna focus on, uh, two things, so, uh, skill development for, uh, frontline staff, so. Um, and management, so we wanna expand our offerings to, uh, management across the department. Um, to give them better skill sets. Um. That's technical skills, um, related to their craft, whether their position might be, whether it's, um, you know, more knowledge around parks. Um, also needed to support more partnerships, um, within the city. Um, there's a variety of partners out there that we were discussing that can assist us with that. Um, and so the additional position and additional funding is to, is to help explore those opportunities.
I might not have heard it. What, what's an example of a partner?
Uh, partners, uh, examples would be, um, CCAC.
Got it.
Uh, Partners for Work. Um. Landforce.
Got it, okay, yeah.
Variety of different organizations, and so some of that is to help create pipelines for jobs in the city, and some of that is also to help. Um, develop the skill sets of our own management staff.
Not an apprenticeship, but some, you know, some, some development of the other workforce, okay, good. Um, and then twenty thousand dollar grant, what, is that an existing grant that that draws from? Or do you happen to know offhand?
Which grant are you, is it in the Bureau of Administration?
Yes.
Is that the Love Your Block?
Oh, that is, sorry, it's in here. It wasn't on my kind of pre-prep sheet, so twenty thousand dollars, Love Your Block, got it, yep. I have no questions about Love Your Block grant, yeah. Um, but that's a significant, I mean, I was talking to some folks who helped administer that, that's a significant. Um, uh, human sort of capital investment, right? Like, that's a lot of time that's spent, basically like a full, it could be a full time position, wouldn't, couldn't you say?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely a full time position. I mean, there's a lot of tracking. Um, a lot of what we've discovered, um, by utilizing our real time safety system is that, you know, there's a lot of training happening on the ground. Um, that's being shared amongst staff, um, but it's not necessarily being standardized or tracked. Um, and so, um, you know, when staff come to us for other opportunities, we don't necessarily know at the management level. Their full capability at my level. Um, and so I think making sure that staff know that there are opportunities that they wanna grow and develop for those staff that are curious. Um, we certainly want to. Um, assist them with that.
And moving on to environmental services, um. So, the two, the anti litter, litter inspectors are moved to admin.
Correct.
And, um, because I imagine that just, it, you've probably already stated this, so again, apologies for missing, but. I imagine that this is, that there, there's the scope of their job just extends beyond what maybe the narrow focus of environmental services is.
Correct, so there's, um. You know, that is a demand based position, um, all of our inspection services, so just to kind of quickly recap. Um, you know, we do the legal enforcement, um, weeds and debris. Um, as well as, you know, inspection is a service of contract administration, that's not like permanent inspection, but that's just making sure that. Our contractors are doing the things that we ask them to do, um, and we wanna pilot a Parks Maintenance Inspection as well. Um, and so we see supervision is necessary to help kind of balance those load, the cross train. Um, you know, a lot of those services are demand based, um, and so, you know, we need to be able to, you know, make prioritization.
Um. And just to kind of. Translate this for others who might be watching or what they heard from the mayor's presentation on the budget. The Environmental Enforcement Manager, um, at least at first, primarily will, will help to enforce the plastic bag ban, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Um, and so I am. I am, um, really enthusiastic that this budget includes that position. And, um, of course, we'll work hand in hand with that position with that person to help the implementation this coming April of the plastic bag ban. Um, you know, I know that at first, there will be significant education efforts that are needed, marketing efforts. Um, making sure that especially our, um, most vulnerable small businesses have the education, the resources. The free bags to distribute, the help to get, you know, paper bags, whatever they need at first. And then with a little bit of grace period to be able to then, you know. Once they have everything they need, they need to follow the rules, right?
Yeah.
Um, and so I'm enthusiastic about that position. At this point, does, does that person have in the budget what they need to help with the marketing, to help with, uh, outreach, to help? Um, you know, do everything that they can to like full court press from January? I would love for this person to be in place in January and then up until April, you know, really be working on that.
We believe so.
Okay.
Um, and as we, as we explore the program further, I mean, if we need to make further recommendations, we will do that. Um, but we believe right now that we have the resources in place to support that person.
Okay, okay, good. Um, you can count on our office to help as needed, and. Do you think that there is an opportunity in your mind that they would interface with, say, um. The Office of Nighttime Economy, who has those good relationships?
Absolutely, I mean, that's the, that's the goal of the coordinator position, right? It's to, it's to make those connections, it's to help with. Um. Uh, for all the reasons that you mentioned. Um, you know, to give a great grace period, to help with the resources, to help with education and outreach. Um, and then ultimately to, to help with the enforcement.
Well, that will be a big lift this spring, but, um, you know, I know with a, a person in place, it'll, it's essential to be able to. Help to be the resource to put the, you know, website together, the frequently asked questions, to be a resource for, say, like the restaurant and industry groups. And all of that, so. Um, okay, I don't think I have any more questions in environmental services. Moving on to. Facilities. Um, we asked this question, um, to, um. Uh, Sustainability Office. Um, how are things going from your perspective on net zero buildings? Making our buildings and facilities more sustainable, carbon neutral?
Hmm, always a challenge. Um, this current construction environment is extremely difficult. Um. Always a worthwhile investment, um, to do when we can, um, to get fully net zero ready. Um, is an extreme investment, um, and we, we did work with sustainability and resiliency to have a variety of a strategy, so not everything has to be a massive. Um, renovation project. Um, because it doesn't, um, we do a lot of really great work in-house. Um, our team of electricians, um, has a very robust program of just replacing light fixtures with LED. Um, so, you know, we're doing the basic improvements that we can. I think we can always do more, but. Oftentimes that requires some type of capital investment and a little bit more upfront planning.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And then, I'm not seeing it here, but I know that from my notes earlier, there's a sharp decrease. I'm sorry, there's a sharp increase, um, in maintenance. And I'm wondering what that, what that captures, what that, is that true?
Is that in the, in the Bureau of Facilities?
My sheets. Well, we can, we can. We can, um, put a pin in that one and move on. When it comes to operations, can you tell me a little bit more about what the forty-one full-time laborers do, seasonally and in general?
General, so, twofold. One is the increase in snow operations. So, that's to increase, increase snow responsiveness. A big part of that program is responding to the backlog of clean and leans that we receive from PLI. On privately-owned property, we have over two hundred and fifty currently that are in our queue that we cannot address due to lack of manpower and resources. And that also includes both the initial lot cleanup as well as the regularly scheduled maintenance. That's about twenty personnel, just solely dedicated to that. The additional personnel would be associated with more responsive improvements across the system. So, more potholes, more frequent trimming of the right-of-way, you know, more consistent support of special events.
Really, everything?
Everything, yes, everything.
Great. Okay, I'm glad to see that.
If I may clarify, just, I finally found it, the five hundred thousand dollar increases in the Bureau of Operations.
And that's related.
Apologies. Okay, thank you, thank you. And then, the fifteen truck drivers?
That's also related to the clean and lean.
Yeah.
And the snow, snow operations.
Got it, got it.
Those, those, those labor classes work in tandem.
What is the actual, if you're able to answer, if either of you is able to answer, the actual funding structure for the Public Safety Training Center search? Or the, just the Public Safety Training Center itself? The, well, maybe forget the structure question and just what we can, what we, you can tell us now about the timeline of the Public Safety Training Center and the building itself?
To my knowledge, and I haven't been working on that side of, of things for a year and a half, but it just, from my experience in, in the process of obtaining the property, we had five years to begin work on the property per the agreement with the GSA.
Has your department touched that at all? Have you been involved, or has that been on the public safety side?
I mean, we've coordinated on the property transfer with the change in administration. You know, we've reviewed the program with the administration. You know, I, I think it's going to require, the program as previously proposed is very aggressive. And because of that, is projecting to be quite expensive. And so, you know, the guidance that I received from this administration was that they wanted to take a good, long look at what is being proposed to make it a more reasonable package. And, you know, we're working to coordinate that with public safety, to see exactly what that might look like.
Yeah. Just wonder if there's a way, and I'm just thinking out loud right now. You can answer if you like, if you don't want to answer, that's also fine, but that we could do it in a more piecemeal fashion. Like, why not move, say, the EMS headquarters up there now? You know, from your perspective, I guess, is there a reason functionally that we couldn't just sort of take it in a piecemeal approach? Okay, this is a building, we renovate that piece of the campus, not the whole thing all at once, but a piece of the campus, move someone there. Okay, like, one, one twentieth of the project is done. Next year, you know, a little bit more chip away at it.
I think to be responsible with the property, you know, there's outstanding utility concerns and building conditions concerns that make that impractical without first exploring like an overall master plan of what you're trying to do. And I think, which is where we were with the previous administration, but again, the overall master plan was very aggressive. And I think just the desire to revisit that program so that we can structure the master plan, and if we need to seek out additional partners, what that would look like. So, I just think beyond that, it would be, you know, irresponsible to project any more detail. Because once you start doing that piecemeal fashion, you really do need to know the program you're trying to accomplish. It is difficult in a large construction program like this, which would be, you know, akin to a small college campus, to necessarily pivot on a dime, you know, a drastic change in program.
You need to know where it fits into the whole project to be able to do it in that way. Understood, okay. My last question, I don't know where this fits in, I guess, maybe facilities and maybe, I don't know where it fits into bathrooms and drinking fountains. Our favorite topic of conversation. So, you know, you and I have spoken, and I've spoken to your staff about this, and many others as well. It's my belief that just as we had this goal of, you know, everyone should be within ten minutes' walk of a, of a green space or public park, it's, we should have, everyone in the city should be within ten minutes' walk at any point from a public restroom and a place to get water, right? Like, basic human needs. And if we can start with making sure that our, our restrooms and parks are open, that's a great start, and I know that we're working on that, and I know we're making progress on that. Can you just speak a little bit from your perspective on how that's going, what the challenges are? And, you know, we can talk about drinking fountains another time, but, but for the restrooms itself and the parks?
I mean, for the restrooms themselves, you know, we piloted some locations throughout the city this fall to open, to be publicly available. You know, we haven't had those restrooms open publicly, you know, throughout a day in quite some time, as you're all aware. And so, that with that comes a lot of challenges. A lot of details that we need to work out, coordination on access, in some instances, you know, you know, coordinating that with athletic associations that were also helping to maintain that, so they, they can understand what's going on and how we can best support each other. And then, you know, the, the basic problems of owning a publicly available restroom. I mean, we've had some vandalism that we've had to address. You know, ensuring that our contractors are providing like the appropriate level of cleanliness. You know, just kind of working through all of those details. You know, revisiting our standards for bathrooms to make them more, you know, environmental, both environmentally friendly, but also, you know, cleanlinessier for citizens. You know, and so, how do we, how do we deliver this humane? This is something that I think we, we all agree with, but we want to take it, you know, one thoughtful step at a time.
And what I'd love to get, I'd love to get to the point where we are able to share in a publicly available database or map what's open at any one time, or if you go to this park, there's a porta potty, there's not an open bathroom, or et cetera. One request is, and I consider this to be like almost climate adaptation, as we're in December, it's warm enough ostensibly to go to a park, right? Can we push back the closing date of winterizing, of, of the non-winterized restrooms and parks? Push that back from whatever it is now, November first, to, say, December first? And so, people who are going to parks in the nice days of November could still have access to, to restrooms.
I mean, I think we can, we can explore that on a case-by-case basis. I mean, that always comes with assumed risk, right? Like, we don't really know when the weather is going to do.
Certainly, it was cold in December, or in November.
It was, but, but it was also warm in November, right? And so, you want to be able to have that flexibility, and I can certainly understand that. I, I think the other, the practical reality is, is that we have so few plumbers on our staff that some of those facilities just end up being open beyond the normal close date because quite simply we don't have enough manpower to kind of close them all, and we take the whole month of November to make that happen. So, it's certainly something that we can, we can explore as we, you know, continue to develop this program.
I'd love to continue to explore that, and maybe getting, I know we don't have Matt Jacob in the, on the city staff anymore painfully, but if we could get some sort of database of, you know, drinking fountains, public restrooms, what's open at any one time. And then, my next project that I'd love to talk to you and Director Vargas about is mapping out, well, just exploring the ADA accessibility in our parks. How accessible is each of our, you know, especially larger parks and smaller pocket parks in various, using various criteria? And then a map. Here's the park that is accessible in these ways. Here's a park that's accessible in these ways. So, you're in a wheelchair, you want to be able to go sit and have a picnic lunch. You know that this is the park to go to because the bench is actually removed from the picnic table, and you can, you know, easily roll up to the the picnic table, for instance, right? Like, that kind of information, so people aren't driving all around the city to find the, the accessible features that they're looking for.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
So, I'd love to work with you on that, but yeah, more kind of publicly accessible databases for those types of things. It just just makes it easy, makes it easy for the average person. Okay, well, thanks for all your work. Thank you for, you know, always being responsive and for, yeah, your willingness to just kind of be, work on every possible type of issue, which I know this job entails, and your, your staff are great, so, appreciate it, and for taking all my questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger. Good questions. Got me thinking about a couple of different things, but the ADA accessible, I will tell you, Bernadette, who comes in here, she just goes through my neighborhood and lets me know everything and everywhere. So, she's free to the city, but she gives me the great information, so I'd be interested in exploring that further with you, so, thank you. You know, we'll go to our esteemed president, Councilwoman Teresa Kiel Smith.
Or me. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Koke. Thank you, Director, for being here and for all your work and for all your crews and everything that they do every day, and they are really challenged. I was just texting back and forth with Rob Kazarowski, our previous Public Works Director, and asking the, how many employees he had when he was here. Under Act Forty-seven, they had six hundred and seventy-eight, and our director just told me, in your proposed budget, you'll have six seventeen. So, that's a big difference. And so, I'm concerned a little bit because although they did really good with snow removal, other than snowmageddon, which people were really politicizing, that wasn't really a, a real issue. I mean, it was, it was bad everywhere, and it snowed a lot. So, of course, it was going to take a little bit longer to clean the roads. But anyway, other than that issue, they, they were pretty effective in, in cleaning the snow with that many people. But I'm concerned that with only this amount of people, that we're not going to be able to do, no matter how many trucks we have. How many drivers total will we have? And, and are you, are you using them cross-season? So, could you use someone who drives a truck for something else to do snow removal, or is that against the union?
We utilize the driver class in snow removal. There's a lot of questions in there. I want to make sure I can answer all of them. You know, those vehicles to which they're rated, so that's like a bigger weight, bigger size. So, drivers and laborers, you know, drive, plow, salt during the year. It's based on the size of the vehicle. So...
And do we have enough vehicles? The vehicles you're ordering, are they enough to get onto the side streets? Because that's been a lot of the concerns, because in a lot of our districts, there's a lot, even though we're doing more with bicycles and, you know, scooters and all those other, you know, modes of transportation, we somehow have a tremendous amount of vehicles parked on both sides of streets and making them even more narrow than they, than they used to be. And so, I, it's my understanding they need the, the smaller vehicles.
Yeah, so part of the lease package is dealing with the, the smaller vehicles. It was specifically targeted to those that, the the characteristic of the fleet that's the most aged, and so therefore, like, the vehicles that are most likely to go down, but it's, it's a cross-section of, of larger and smaller vehicles.
Is that you?
That is me, sorry.
I thought it was mine. I thought I shut it off, I can't remember. No, don't worry about it. Hey, I listen to dogs barking next to me sometimes. When some people's phones went off, so.
The ducks quacking.
Anyway. So, so I'm just, I just want to say a little bit about the snow removal and the, and the trucks. I, you know, I, I'm not crazy that we're using the money from the park tax. I don't think that's what the residents intended. But I'm going to say that I also think that residents want the snow removed, and you're going to not only remove snow in parks, I, if you used them on the street, as long as residents were getting safely to parks, maybe, that would be okay. But I do think that you need to have some type of partnership with an organization that can help increase the funding for parks and do some of the work that they do. And I will say that, you know, I'm, I've never been a huge fan of contracting with other groups or organizations, or Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy. I did not support the park tax until the public supported it. When they voted for it, then I voted for it, but up until then, I did not. But at the same time, I do value that they can raise money and that they can also come up and, and with plans for some of our buildings and some of the things that we do in the city. And so, I just want to say that I hope that, is, is it your, is it your understanding that we're not going to have any partnership with them?
No, that's not my understanding at all. We partner with them constantly. We will continue to partner with them constantly. They're a valued partner of ours.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure, because, I mean, I'm hearing the conversation here, and I just want to make sure that they're not, we just didn't, okay, we got the park tax money and we're done, now you go. You know what I mean? But at the same time, although I didn't like the way they, they, they lobbied for the park tax, I, I think it was horrible, the way they did it. I think now that we have the opportunity to do something great in our parks, we should be doing it together, but, and including the residents.
I agree.
Yeah. So, I just wanted to talk about that. But then, I am briefly, I want to ask you, do you, are you in charge of maintaining like the stables where the horses are? I think it's on the north side.
Uh, we lease that facility.
Okay. So, it's my understanding they have a difficult time with the turnaround there. Do you know about that? The turnaround for the horses. They said it's on the north side.
What are the, what's the?
They said there's, there's a difficult time, and the horses are, like, somebody's going to...
The horse is going to get injured? Is that their concern?
Yes.
What's the? I'll have to follow, I'll follow up with public safety on that.
Okay, well, I'll show you a video, and I'll send it to you, okay?
Absolutely.
So, that, I just want to make sure to talk about that. Then, the Stevens School Building and the steam fitters. What is the timeframe for Stevens School? What's the matter?
For the Stevens School?
Yeah, no, I just saw you look at each other. Okay, I want to make sure I didn't miss something. I'm thinking, wait. Somebody's doing something, I'm going to be crazy.
She sees everything.
Hey, I'm a mom, I know how to look.
I mean, as you know, like, we kind of had to adjust course on a program, right? So, we have to revisit the Architectural Services. Believe, I'll have to confirm and follow up with you on that detail, but I, I feel pretty confident that we just reworked that amendment to that contract, so we can rebegin. So, I would, I would expect our staff reaching out to you and your office and constituents this spring to discuss moving forward with the Stevens Project. My rough estimation is, you know, for, for construction is probably, you know, from now until occupancy is going to be at least two years.
Okay. So, I'm not happy with that answer.
I'm sure you're not happy with that answer.
It's taken a long time, and we've done a lot more since then with a lot of other buildings, and I think if the kids in District Two were a priority, they would be doing more in that area to help.
And into that, I would say, you know, we started with a program that was strictly public safety, and we completely changed that program. So, if you want to look to us over, over a year ago, contract changes take time, and also need require funding which had to be allocated to do so.
Well, we'll move some funding then.
I, I'm not, I would have to double-check on this, but they, I think they might be fully funded. One of the issues is we have RCAP funding for that, which means there's more hoops that we have to jump through and make sure all of the plans are in place and everything's finalized before we can start.
Director Pollock just moved something to...
Yeah, I, I think they, I believe the funding is in place, it was just doing the programming.
I think that we need a place. I mean, we have, everything we have on our side of town is public, is privately ran. We have the Salvation Army, we have the Open Door, we have Reem Rec, which we own, but we don't fund, you know, I fund it, but you, the city doesn't as well. And we have something else, I can't remember. Oh, it's the Jasmine Irie Campus in Sheridan. So, we have places, but they're all privately funded. And so, I think it's, it's inexcusable that there's over seventeen neighborhoods in that district, and there's not one public facility that's, that's used for the kids. And this is the one building, and there's no sense of urgency, but yet, we all talk about how important it is to keep the kids safe, how it is, how important it is to give them a safe place to be, how important it is to, to address the public safety issues, the violence, but yet, here's an opportunity to help get some kids off the street, and nobody, there's no sense of urgency. So, I just want to, and I know this not just, you won't, I just want to make sure I'm very clear. I know this is not just your decision. And what is going on with the Fourth Division?
Fourth Division, oh.
I didn't put her up to that.
I'm, I'm, I'm...
Because the Fourth Division not being in place affects District Two not getting their snow plowed as effectively as they would if they just had Fifth Division focusing just on them. So, any update on that?
You know, we are in the process of final permitting and approvals, going out the contract as soon as possible, looking to break ground as soon as possible, definitely next year.
Okay, so that's, I hear that every year. And I just want to say, I mean, I think that people tend to not look at the southwest Pittsburgh area as much, because you see a lot of votes and a lot of things coming out of the East End. Well, this last election, correct me if I'm wrong, Well, this last election, correct me if I'm wrong, southwest Pittsburgh had more votes than the East End. So I just want to remind people, there's an interest in our side of town to start seeing more investment in our side. And so, and we partner with the north side pretty well, too. So I think that, you know, people need to realize there's more to the city of Pittsburgh. And not that we don't want to see anyone getting what they, we, but we want to get a piece of the pie, that's all. Speed bumps, I, I asked you and Director Lucas Pryor, I actually think it was weeks ago, we asked about doing them in-house, because I think we could knock them out faster than if we were doing them waiting for a contractor. Is there any progress on that?
Uh, I mean, Director Lucas and I have certainly talked about it. I would love to do that. You know, we have to build that skill set. We need, you know, we need DOMI to, you know, spec it, develop a pilot program. I mean, it's going to take some time to stand up that type of thing. But hopefully, with our research that she and I have done with other cities that have implemented similar programs, that, you know, I think it's both of our beliefs that we could stand up something that would be both in-house for the installation as well as the maintenance of it. So it would just become part of our regular work.
I think that's a great, I, I, I just know that we used to do things like that in-house and I don't see it, you know, recently, I haven't seen it in a lot of places. I don't see the winrows or any of those things that they used to do.
Well, they still do those. Our, our people still do those.
I mean, I see them once in a while, but not like I used to. But that DOMI part, that's, that's not you. And I just, you know, I, I, my mother lives in Scott Township. And so I drive down the road and I see on their garbage day, the cans are all nice and neat, everything's down in a row, there's no trash around. And then you see the truck that comes with an arm and it just, you know, puts it in the truck. I just wonder, you know, is there any interest in getting different trucks, different types of trucks, trucks that have that ability to use the arm and lift the cans out? Or would that take a position away from someone? Because they have two drivers on their trucks, too.
Yeah, I think that is more just a condition of our city streets being very narrow and not having the maneuverability to, to use that technology.
I mean, as you see some of them and it's amazing how they collect the trash. You know, I, I think since I've been here, the most legislation I put in has been under DPW. I put in, you know, working with Dan Gilman previously, the Clean and Lean Program, the Anti-Litter Program, the Hard to Recycle Program. So you can tell I have a thing with this trash stuff, okay? I actually like going and picking it up, so and getting it out off the streets. I used to do it more often. But anyway, so the Clean and Lean Crew.
Yes.
You have them still?
Yes, this, this, well, no, they, we don't have staffing to maintain the Clean and Lean Crew for this year.
Will you with this?
Yes, absolutely. So my presentation addressed that. The, we have a backlog of two hundred and fifty Clean and Lean requests that we've not been able to get to. To address that backlog and then provide the preventative maintenance, that's about total of about twenty personnel. So of the Bureau of Operations that you see, the fifteen drivers and the forty-six labors, in those months, twenty of those people are going to be dedicated solely to addressing Clean and Lean.
And what about the Anti-Litter Program? Is Missy, is she still there?
Absolutely, Missy's still there. Chris Mitchell, Alicia Carberry, we have.
Who reports to whom?
They all right now report to, Missy reports to Assistant Director Newman. Chris and Sean report to Sean Widel. And part of getting the supervisory inspector position, I'm sorry, the inspection supervisor position is to help coordinate those activities between the two things.
Is there any, are there any, any plans for cameras, using additional cameras?
At this time, no. It's certainly something that we, we proposed in our budget, but just didn't clear through to this final draft.
So is, and how about allowing other people to issue citations for litter or in, or dumping or anything like that? Other than, other than this department, other than the, I'm sorry, the Anti-Litter people, are there other people that can issue citations? Other than police? No. Like can the GPW workers do it, is what I'm thinking?
Uh, our foreman will issue them for things related to, you know, the residential garbage collection in that code, but it gets a little bit murky there. That's not my, you know, honestly, I'd have to follow up on some of those details with you. Enforcement's not my specialty.
Okay, well enforcement's a concern, but more than that, education is a concern. And I wonder if we're still going into the schools or doing that stuff with the staff?
We would love to do that. I don't think we have enough staff to do that at this time, but that's certainly something that we were discussing internally that we want to, we want to bring to the table in future budget years. Because we think that that's like absolutely critical as part of that mission.
I do too. Okay. And then the Hard to Recycle Program, that's not with Pennsylvania Resource Council?
That's correct.
Okay. And somebody mentioned, Councilwoman Kraus mentioned the other day, so I want to ask them, or maybe you can, if you know, that you cannot, there's no place for us to take fire extinguishers. Do you know if they take that?
I don't have an answer, of course. I'll find out, absolutely.
I'm just curious, so we can tell the public what to do. Okay, and that's it for me. I want to thank you for all the work that you do and all the crews and everything they do. The Fifth Division does an amazing job on our side of town, John McClory and all of them. And I also want to thank the Parks Crews because they, they really work really hard. Our parks look amazing on our side of town, for the most part. There's some that need some work and they're working on them, but overall, and Andrea, she's, her designs and everything that she's working on, I mean, she's just been, I mean, she's working on so many parks in my district, I can't, it's, it's difficult to keep track of. And it's not just in my district, so I want to thank her and acknowledge her for her work, too, and that whole team. Thank you.
Good.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. And, you know, Director, we meet, you know, every other week. So, so, so I really don't have a whole lot of questions for you, but I do want to follow up on some of the things that were said and some things that I just want to verify. The lean and clean, okay, private property. We never go inside the property, this is exterior, of course.
Correct.
Okay. Now, the lean and clean and lean means we file a lien on that property. So when or if that property owner, if we ever could locate them, decide to sell, we have a lien. And what's that amount? What, what kind of lien do we put on it?
Uh, yeah, I'm going to have to defer that question to Finance. They would handle that aspect of it.
Got it. So, so we're.
They have to pay for the cost of cleanup.
Yeah, right, right. So, so whatever the cost that we deem Public Works and however many people you may have there, I guess is, there's some sort of formula that we use and we put a lien on that. So we probably have lots of liens on properties right now of cleans and liens, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I can't stand the fact that we have to chase these property owners down. Then it becomes in our hands like this. But as Councilman Wilson was saying, if they have mattresses and things like that in New York, we have to get it cleaned up. So I guess it's the only way to do it. So I'm glad to hear we're beefing that up and we're going to have more people on that. I resorted to the fact because we're so far behind, two hundred and fifty behind. And I know you don't have the resources to handle it like you, you'd like to, but we just, I, I hire a guy, you know, to, to actually do it because it's, it's so, you know.
Can I say that you hire a guy? I'm going to tell the public, he hires people to go on other people's property to clean them up. He does. He gets people.
That, that would be illegal. I would never do such.
He gets people's grass cut and everything.
I do, I do. And you know what I say? If I, if they file a complaint against me, well, we've been looking for you anyway, we need to talk to you. So, you know, I've never had a complaint filed against me from a property owner who I've sent somebody on there to, you know, clean and lean. Oh, no, I do not have permission, that's right. Guilty as charged. Okay, so let's get off that subject. So, so we were talking about the logistics manager that I put in for. The logistics manager, you know, we initiated at my office with you.
Yes.
And the description I heard you tell, tell Mr. Wilson of the logistics manager is quite different than what I had thought. And I'm talking specifically through winter because of, because if it's an eight-inch snowfall, for instance, I'm on the phone with my supervisors, I'm on the phone with you. I thought that logistics manager, and I'm hoping this is still in the, in the plan, is somebody, I could pick up the phone and be like, well, they're telling me we have two trucks in the South Hills and trackers showing zero. So I, I wanted that person to help me through winter, basically, as a contact, instead of, I know Jeff, I know John McClory, they're busy, you know, just checking on their, their work crews. But that's what I was hoping that person would help us out through times like that.
I, I mean, I still think the, for that direct connection, I still think that that's the best approach. You know, if I gave you that impression last year that I apologized, that was not my intent to provide you that singular point of contact. Because I think you want somebody that knows, you know, how the resources are being deployed and where they are and what the limitations might be in terms of the communication, so the logistics manager could handle some of that. So for example, these leased vehicles that we, that we just talked about, they're not going to show up on the snow tracker. They're not going to be plugged into our system that way.
Right, right. I know.
But I, I just, I just kind of wanted to be clear about that.
Sure. Yeah, we can't equip them with the mechanisms that we need to be on the tracker.
Yeah.
Which is another reason why the tracker is just like so inaccurate, but we'll get to that in a second.
Well, I mean, we can't even, we won't even be able to track their progress in our own internal system.
Well, that's.
Which is a limitation of the lease, but I would, you know, quite honestly, for the safety of the public, I still would, you know, approach it as, let's get the vehicle out there and have it working.
Absolutely. You know, I don't know if this could be done. I have a problem with the tracker because it causes a lot of work for me. You know, people, they get on social media and then I have friends calling me, I have relatives calling me and the, the whole world in my district knows that District Two has more trucks on the street than District Four and, and it causes a firestorm.
They must be drinking, because that's not true.
It causes a firestorm. It really does. Is there, if I so choose to say, you know what, this tracker's more of a problem than what it's worth, can we take District Four off with a click of a button and leave other districts on, or does it have to be citywide?
Would have to explore that with the technical team. I'm not sure what the limitations there would be.
Now, I voted for the funding for it only because I believe internally it's a useful tool for you. I really do. I believe, unless it was a hundred percent accurate, we shouldn't be putting that out there in the public. And again, it causes more work than, and that's kind of what I needed a logistics person to, you know, dealing with these phone calls and things of this nature, you know, we have cars sliding in the houses and other problems to deal with, but I find myself struggling with, you know, everybody complaining about the tracker, so. So I would love to know if I could hit a button and say, I'll take the bullets for it in the Fourth District and say, no more tracker. Because it's, 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 it's become more of a, you know, social media, I don't know, problem for me, I will say. And if it's not accurate, especially with the new vehicles, you know, or the leased vehicles, that we can't log them into that, I mean, what's the sense of this, you know? I, I get it. It's nice to see a, a plow truck coming down your street, you know, to know when you can safely, or when you, when it'd be better to leave your house. But if it's not accurate, it's, it's no good, that's all.
I love when they call and tell me the plow truck went down their street, but the plow was up.
I get that a lot, I get that a lot, too. So, as you know, we made so many, so many improvements as to what we used to go by, the distribution of salt, calling workers in for forced overtime, things of that nature, so we're not caught like we were. It always seems to happen like Christmas Day and New Year's Day for me, but, you know. So, so, so I, I do love the improvements that we made. Talk to me about leasing the trucks. I know this year we're going to do fourteen leases. Last year we did six. You know, we did it kind of as a pilot program, which was in desperate need last year, and I know how valuable that was. These leases, to me, you know, maybe that's the way to go, is what I'm saying, through at least the winter months, you know. I don't know, first of all, do we have the, I guess, mechanics to regularly, regularly take care of our vehicles? The numbers you threw out at first as to, we have this many vehicles and two are operational. You know, I feel like we can't keep up with these older vehicles. I don't even know if we have the mechanics to do so. So just give me your thoughts as to, is the lease program something that you feel that we should permanently do? It's nice not to have to worry about the vehicles breaking down and give them back and get a new dependable fleet the next year. So I just want your thoughts on that.
You know, I think the lease program as a stopgap is fine. I don't know that I would necessarily recommend it for, as standard practice throughout the fleet. I, I think the standard practice is a properly aged fleet is the most cost efficient way to manage that program is under an ownership model. But where I think the, where leases can be very effective is in specialty equipment that maybe isn't used all that long. So, you know, we have a couple of like really large trucks that we use for, for snow on some of our really, you know, large areas that we maintain. But in the summertime, they're not really that active because we, we don't do that type of work anymore. And so I think, I think some of those things are where I would look at a, at a permanent lease structure. And I, and I do think, and it is part of my plan to review for 2023, that we need to, you know, really look at the size and distribution of our fleet in conjunction with our frontline workers, because I think as Council President mentioned, you know, it's getting to those side streets and those narrow areas. If that's more of what's needed, just taking, there's absolutely nothing wrong, we should be taking a good, long, hard look at the size of the vehicles that we're putting out there and how that's distributed and making a good, informed decision on that. Because the way the fleet is constructed now was kind of based upon an operation that we had when we still had an asphalt plant. And so that's why we have some of the larger vehicles, because those vehicles facilitated all of that asphalt. We were producing asphalt ourselves, but since we no longer have that operation, I think it's, it's, it's well past time for us to take a good, long look at, you know, how our fleet is composed, getting smaller vehicles, more nimble, more structured to how we work today.
Absolutely. Ideally, it would be a combination in my eyes, you know. But, you know, I was not thrilled with you and the mayor coming up with the twenty-four hour promise to have all roads treated. And I, I'm glad you, you're specifying treated. They, but in their minds, it's cleared right now, I will tell you. And we could try to, you know, say, that means treated, that means we're going to put salt down all we want. But in their minds, when they hear you say that, I wish you would have consulted with me on that. Not that you need to, but, you know, I feel like I have to answer to my district and, you know, you know how demanding they are on this issue. And to throw out such a rosy colored promise to me was just kind of like, oof. So treated means treated, salt, basically. Not plowed, not cleared, treated.
Yeah, and I think people also need to understand that, you know, and it is practice, as I've researched with, you know, multiple municipalities around, we don't drop plows unless there's three inches of more on the road. The plows are always on the truck, so sometimes when you receive that comment, it's because there's only an inch of snow on the road and we're just, we're just treating with salt. And that's industry best practice to do that. Otherwise, we would be wearing out plow blades constantly and, you know, the vehicles would be even for even more maintenance just to, just to resurface a plow blade, which takes, you know, a good bit of time, several hours to change a plow blade out.
Absolutely. So back to the Fourth Division, I would have no problem making that promise to the residents if the Fourth Division was up and running, you know. And just to clarify, I never missed the opportunity to say that this division is going to be built next year. Come hell or high water.
Anthony will build it himself.
I will build it myself. I'm a general contractor, I'll build it, okay?
Not my own.
But it's been five years in the make, you know. And of course, there's things beyond our control, the mineshaft, we can go on COVID, you know, lots of different reasons. But, you know, I've promised my district, my district that this thing is going to be built and we are on it. We're ready for RFPs, we're cleared by the EPA. We have nothing holding us back at this point unforeseen. And, you know, I'm counting on in early spring, I, I need this up and running by next winter, you know, and fully staffed. And whether it's leased trucks or new trucks, you know, I know it will make a huge difference in, you know, the treatment of our roads in my district. It's not even, it's not even, the, the Fourth Division's not even in my district, of course, it's being built in District Three. But as not having a Public Works Division in where it used to be, as Councilwoman Kail Smith said, it affects her division, because now they're picking up, they're coming from her division to come over here and it's just a snowball effect, so. So I'm counting on that. I just didn't want to fail to mention that. Anytime we're on camera, anytime I'm in public, you can count on me bringing that up, of course, you know. So, okay, the, the other thing was I asked you about, there's one alley in particular along Pioneer Avenue. We said, we're going to, we're going to treat this like a main road because they don't have on-street parking, they don't have driveways in the front. They all depend, like a lot of Brooklyn, they depend on the alleys, that's kind of like their driveway, you know. But there's a row of thirty houses here, I'll bet you, and it's on a hill and it's difficult to plow. But I think it's more important to, you know, I, I can't think, I, I don't believe we could just judge every road by, you know, tertiary or not. This particular road, these people have no way of getting out unless they park at Moore Park and that's. of getting out unless they park at Moore Park, and that's other, causes other problems. So is that, is that, we're going to be able to implement that? You know, can I tell these folks that, you know, your road's going to be treated as a main road, basically? That's, that's the only one I'm asking for, actually, in the district, but like, you know, they need access. They, and there's elderly people.
We're still reviewing that internally to see how we're going to accommodate that, that service.
So that's a no? Or that's, we don't know?
That's a, still, you know.
Okay. Because I will tell you, they were waiting for an answer from me. I need to tell them, and, you know, we're weeks away from probably the first snowfall, and I want them to know that, yes, we're going to be plowing your road, maybe not before Pioneer, but, you know, during that time. I, I just need that included in, just because I know there's so many elderly people live there. That's their only way in and out, and, you know, they have to go to doctor's appointments, and everybody has things to do. Uh, and it's the only one that's really a problem, because it's on such a steep hill. Steep hill going down to it, and it's a steep hill, the alley itself. So I believe it's called Paul Way, but, okay, so I'd like to get an answer on that, definite, definitive answer on that.
I'll, I'll follow up with staff and get you one as soon as possible.
Great, great, great. Um, one other thing I wanted to mention was the, um, I went to the firefighters recruitment class, uh, thirty-two people, it was great, you know. However, when we had Chief, um, what's her chief's name? It's Chief Jones here, right, last week, you know, uh, th- there's a serious deficiency there. You know, we only have, I, I want to say, four female firefighters, and I know they're working on that. I was glad to see there was one in the graduating class, so that will make five. But my question is this. I know, you know, the firefighters is not, their operation's not for you, but I believe, I believe we've already remodeled or, or made certain firehouses where they have male and female, um, restrooms. And that's vital, I think, to recruitment for females, number one, and sleeping quarters, however you split that up. I just think that's, that's, that's a must. And I was surprised to hear, and, and I know you can't control this, but Chief Jones, I said, how many female, you know, firefighters do we have? He said, four. I said, oh, okay. I said, well, how many, um, fire stations have we accommodated? And he said, oh, I think about four. And I said, oh, great. I said, you know, I thought, you know, do we, but, but I was surprised to find out that the female firefighters, none of them are at those stations that we made those accommodations. And, and that goes back to collective bargaining, you know, it's not something I know you can control. But what is the pace that we're, we, we do remodel, Public Works, that follows on Public Works to, to do that, right?
Yeah, so we, we do have a program to, um, significantly remodel five stations, and that would include improvements for, um, female quarters. Um, but also, um, you know, based on the condition, it's a broader one. So that, that gets attached to design services. That also follows a, um, you know, a trajectory that's more like, let's say, the fourth division. Uh, and so that takes time. And so, you know, we have, uh, reached out to, we have reached out, um, to the union and fire leadership, um, to coordinate a program by where we can make some simple changes and make, um, more appropriate accommodations in stations that don't require that level of investment, so they don't have to wait. Um, and so we can help accelerate this program. So we are working on the backend on that internally. Um, that, you know, that's intended to be done, um, you know, with our in-house resources as much as possible, um, you know, kind of avoiding those things that would, um, you know, create a large renovation project and then, um, you know, create an extended timeline to deliver.
Right, got it. Okay, um, yeah, I just think it's hard to recruit without that, you know, uh, female firefighters. But that's really not your problem. I just want, but, but I know we're.
Well, we're here to help. We're here to help with those problems, though, and, you know.
Right, right. So, so, uh, that's really it for me? I, I'm going to come back to you, right? You want, okay. But, um, yeah, if I can get an answer on Paul Way, uh, uh, what else was I looking for? Oh, the tracker. If I could get an answer on the tracker.
I will, I will get it.
If it could be muted out in my district, I just want to know if it could be. I'm not saying I would want to go ahead with that, but, you know, I know maybe some other members like it. I know some have problems with it. I don't, I, I didn't take an inner pull with other council members. But, um, yeah, I would really like to know if we could take that offline or not.
I'll, I'll see what we can do about the, um, for the technology piece.
Yeah, that's, I guess that's what I need to know, you know. And, um, and, you know, and I want to say, you know, I think you're doing a really good job, uh, you know, your, your workers, everybody under Public Works, so there's nothing but respect for you. Um, I think that, uh, moving forward, I'm not comfortable coming up this winter until we get that Public Works Division built, but, you know, I do feel you're taking all measures that you can in order to provide the services that, that the district needs. So, so thanks for what you do. I look forward to our next meeting, and we'll probably go over these same things then, too, like we always do.
I can certainly, I can certainly confirm the interest in the fourth division.
Good. Thank you very much. Okay, Madam President.
Thank you. I'm going to ask a question for, uh, Councilwoman-elect Warwick, um, she wants to know, do we have any shared services with boroughs, uh, for snow removal, especially in the outer neighborhoods like Lincoln Place?
Um, no, we don't have any of those. Um, it's a topic that I want to explore for the future. Um, I think right now our focus is on, um, you know, right sizing our, um, our current operation. Um, when I've had those conversations with some of the outer, um, municipalities, um, really what it comes down to is they're able to provide a level of services that is different than ours. Um, and so because we're so, um, it's such a different level of service, I get concerned about, um, where we can partner, um, because we're just, we're not, we're not providing the same level. Um, and so that becomes a concern of mine. But as we improve the operation and we get, we get closer, um, to other folks, so I, I certainly want to, um, explore all of those avenues.
Okay, thank you. She'll follow up with you next week after her swearing-in if she has any, any further follow-up. But, um, I also, um, want to say that East Carnegie is done by the county, um, and we have different, we have different partnerships with the county throughout our district, because, uh, we border so many boroughs. We border the most boroughs in our district. So the county does all East Carnegie, but then you do all of Nobles Town or something like that. It's a different, different, um, trade-offs. So I want to thank you for that. But I also want to acknowledge that we've been working with the athletic associations with you and trying to come up with some ways that, you know, that they can be a partner in the city. And I want to thank you for your work, because I know you're working towards that a lot. Um, even though I get crazy, you know, I get crazy about it. But, um, just about snow removal, the, there's a lot of ice coming off of Mountain Washington and a lot of hills. And so I always worry that right as it starts getting cold, that that's ice is going to freeze, we're going to have accidents. We already have lawsuits because of some of them. Um, I wonder if there's any effort beforehand to go out to some of those known places, known sites, and try to address the water runoff before the winter. Um, and we're almost there. So I just wondered if, what, what do you do in, because there's a lot on Shaler, there's a lot on Woodruff, um, you know, streets, there's a lot in Elliot and different streets.
Yeah, we, we have a list of all those places where, you know, there's just frequent water on the road surface year-round. Um, and so we do, as much as possible, try to proactively go out and treat.
Yeah, but it's constantly scraping ice off the streets. And if you're not there, then there's, I, and I'm just thinking, there's got to be some times where we could better address this a little bit better, try to stop the water from running off wherever, or redirect it. And I know you have to get the DEP permission to redirect, um.
Yeah, so that's a partnership with Domi and, um, PWSA.
Yeah. Well, you know what I do? I, I don't let somebody tell me it's Domi. I don't let somebody tell me it's DPW or PWSA. I say, oh, you meet me out there. And that's what we, and so I think, then there's no finger pointing, somebody's taking responsibility. And honestly, I, I will say, one of the things Dan Gillman was good at was bring everyone together, this is the solution. And so everybody would work together and, and have a part of it. So, um, I want to thank him for that. But I also want to acknowledge that, um, I appreciate that Mary Gany realized, um, the importance of hiring more staff. I think that, um, I think that's really important for this. I think of, of all the departments that affect our residents, that they see outside their door, it's, I think it's, yours is one of the top of, obviously, snow removal streets, um, well, debris, um, trees, all those things that affect their quality of life. So I want to thank you for the work that you do, but I want to thank the mayor, um, and acknowledge that, um, that I, I'm glad that he realizes the importance to the community. People care about back to basics, that's why they elected this guy. So I think that people care about that, you know. So I want to, I want to thank the mayor for recognizing that and, and putting in the request for additional staff. Because I think of all the departments, it's one of the places our residents don't mind, we spend money, you know, so. So I want to thank him for that. And I want to thank you. Just tell them where you live. District Two. District Two people. So, I said, the last four direct, no, Rob Kaczarowski, Bobby Pomacina, you, Marcel, Tommy Pollin, who does the park, all live in Banksville. I said, it should be pristine.
You finished?
I'm done.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I, I did want to comment on what you were just saying about the, uh, you know, for instance, I have underground springs that leak out onto the road.
Yep.
Um, and they're nightmares. They are absolute nightmares. All we could do, and I know this just through the past five years, is get a salt truck there, pow it with salt, and, you know, to hope that, that, you know, breaks it up or people at least get traction from that.
Now, we have a lot of people at the state level that care about the city of Pittsburgh, hopefully. Maybe now we'll start getting some of those dollars into the city to fix those things.
Right, right. And I will say, PWSA does play a big role in that. He can't control the water coming.
Right.
From, but, but PWSA can. A couple of particular instances, like you said, and it, it always seems to be like at the bottom of the hill going into a main road, you know, so it's like, it's dangerous, it's really a public safety issue, but I hear you on that. I have, uh.
It's bad.
I feel like I have a hundred of them, but, um, yeah.
And the older I get, the more cognizant I am of it.
Yeah, they're a real pain. They really are. So, um, so, uh, Councilwoman Strasberg, did you have anything to add, or did you, or you were finished? Okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You're, you're, you're good? Okay. Well, Director, uh, thank you for being here. Thank you for the, the work you do. And I love your forecast that we're not going to have any snow this year, you said, right?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna cancel the program.
Cancel the leases. Forget about the salt. We don't need it anymore, right?
Yeah. Well, we're gonna, we're gonna wait to see what the Groundhog does, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good deal. So, uh, thanks again for being here. Thank you all, council members for being here. And I have a motion to recess.
So moved. Second.
Thanks. You're recessed.
Good afternoon, and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's budget hearings. I'm Teresa Kell Smith, and I will be chairing the budget updates for the Department of Parks and Recreation. Uh, can we have the director and everyone come forward? Uh, and I'm going to turn it over to our budget director, Peter McDivitt, so he can, um, give a little update.
Thank you. The Department of Parks and Recreation seeks to enrich and enhance the lives of City of Pittsburgh residents by fostering lifelong learning through programs, social connections, healthy, active living, and culturally diverse recreational and educational opportunities within the city's community recreational facilities, parks, and program spaces. A quick overview, the Department of Parks and Recreation is comprised of four main operational areas, operations and administration, recreation, project design and delivery, healthy, active living, parks and special programming, and special events. That's six, not four. Um, uh, position summary, uh, for the mayor's proposed 2023 budget, there's a total full-time positions paid out of the general fund, um, of fifty-one positions, which is an increase of seven and a half positions. Uh, and that comes to a total increase of seven hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, which is a, about a twenty-three percent increase. A quick summary of non-personnel changes. Overall, there's a three hundred ninety-eight thousand five hundred dollar increase in non-personnel expenses, um, the largest being a one-time transfer to the senior programs. Uh, and as far as capital, there is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the community development block grant for the senior community program. And also just to note, the Department of Public Works, the Bureau of Facilities, is responsible for facility improvements to recreation and senior centers and park reconstruction.
Thank you, Director McDivitt. Um, and can we have you introduce yourselves to the public?
Sure. Hi, um, my name is Catherine Vargas. I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation for the city.
Um, good afternoon. I'm Luanne Haran. I'm the Assistant Director of the Senior Program.
Thank you both. And Director, do you have a few things you'd like to say?
I do. Thank you so much. Give me one second. I'm going to put some things up here on the screen. So I, um, I thank you again for taking the time to, um, to talk through our budget. I did want to go over, I don't know if it's showing there. Share it like this. Okay. Um, thank you for taking some time to, uh, meet with us. I wanted to talk real quickly about some of our successes in 2022. Um, first, starting with our senior programs, um, we have thirteen senior centers that we run in the city. Um, in 2022, we have, um, two thousand two hundred and eighty active members across our centers. Um, we have provided over sixty-five thousand meals, um, to date this year, um, with half of those being the congregate meals in which seniors come to our center to eat, the other half being emergency meals, uh, which we've had access to since the pandemic, to provide meals at home for seniors. Um, and we've, uh, provided over fourteen hundred unique programs for seniors across our centers. We also have two, um, seasonal assets that we run. We run the, um, operations for the pools. We had over fifteen, um, a hundred and fifteen thousand patrons last summer at our pools, uh, and over eighteen thousand folks who visited the skate, um, rink, uh, in the last season. This is a picture from our opening day this year, actually. We also run, yeah, it was quite, quite festive. We also run ten, um, recreation centers. Um, we have also, um, uh, provided over a hundred and ten thousand, um, meals to youth, uh, through the summer and after-school programs. Uh, we had over three hundred kids involved in our city summer camp, which runs out of five of our recreation centers. Um, seventy-five kids are currently in our after-school programs, and a hundred and sixteen, um, young people have participated in rec tech programming this year. That's happened virtually. Um, and so far, it's, uh, we've, we've been outfitted to do this work at, um, Ammon and Pulson, uh, and we partnered with, um, some, uh, poor law down at the Bergwin Recreation Center to provide some programming there as well. Um, our community enrichment programs, um, came back, uh, you know, our season back in person art cart. We had over two thousand visits of the art cart and their support at community events. Um, we had our largest ever alphabet trail and tails. And again, this was our first time back in person for a lot of these programs. As you can see, that, that's a picture from Frick Park. We, um, you know, we have a little clicker, so it's not the most, uh, you know, scientific way to know, but we estimate we had over five thousand folks join us for that day. Um, we also partner really closely with Pittsburgh Public Schools. We did over twenty-five events with various Pittsburgh Public Schools, the majority of those being at Pittsburgh Langley, which we have a ongoing special relationship with. Um, and we served over five thousand young people in that, um, relationship. Um, and then for city sports, um, we had our largest RBI season yet. We added Little League. We had seventy-two teams, um, play four hundred and thirty-five games that we organized, uh, with a number of the, um, local youth athletic, um, uh, baseball associations. We also ran a fall basketball league, uh, where we had over two hundred young people participate. We did that in partnership with Ozenham. Uh, we also have a, a separate high school rec basketball league, um, for those high school students that are interested in, in regular play that, um, aren't in competitive sport. We had six teams and seventy-five participants there. And then I will note that our indoor soccer, our footsaw program continues to grow. Um, this year already, we're still taking sign-ups, um, till the nineteenth. We have over thirty-five teams and, um, you know, uh, well over, um, three hundred and fifty participants already signed up to participate in that. Um, and we do those, uh, you know, alongside our rec centers, we'll all have teams, but we work with a lot of community partners that participate in those programs. And then I wanted to do, um, a quick shout-out to our partner, um, DPW, as you know, and Pete mentioned, uh, Department of Public Works does all of the facilities, upgrades, maintenance, and capital projects for us. One that we're particularly excited about, because it's happening right now, is the Mellon Tennis Bubble. Uh, so this is the inside of the bubble. If you've never been in the bubble, uh, the first time I walked in, it was like, whoa. Uh, but, uh, as you'll see, they're mid-project right now, um, getting the floor done, and it's been a long time coming for us. We had over twenty thousand users every year at the bubble. Um, and in clinics alone, we serve over five thousand people who sign up for our, our clinics that are pros run. A couple of highlights about the budget that we're really excited about. Um, one in particular, uh, we were able to, um, provide a, uh, a cost of, you know, a livable wage increase to our rec leader ones, uh, which is the, um, lowest paid full-time, um, employment in our department. So that means a lot. We have thirty-five people who are rec leader ones. Um, so that's a big, um, impact on, on those staff. Uh, we also are expanding city sports, um, by adding another individual. So to date, city sports has been, um, a one-person show, but by adding that, we hope to engage more sports leagues, um, in a more meaningful way, and particularly sports that we don't already, um, have a relationship with. Um, and then we are also taking on the special events, um, team from public safety, particular to the events that are run, um, by the city. Uh, in doing so, we're excited about revamping the farmers markets. We have a lot of thoughts there. Um, and, uh, Um, and, uh, just overall growing our footprint, um, within the, um, programming that happens within the parks. And that partnership, um, and transfer of, of that team will allow us to do that. Um, and then I, I just real quickly wanted to show this, uh, just as we think about our work, some of the things that we've been doing, um, to increase, uh, how we, we kind of think about our work. One in particular, uh, our senior programs have typically kind of been separate and in their own space. We are looking at how we continue to build on our senior programs to conclude, uh, a focus on wellness. And, um, as we do more nutrition support, how we, um, sort of, uh, put our food programming all together. Um, so we're looking at, um, having our senior programs and our food programs, um, more, um, more working as a team, because, uh, we recognize that a lot of our food support goes by way of our senior programs. And we see ourselves as wanting to increase in the way that we've supported nutrition for Pittsburgh residents. Um, and then, of course, as you know, our community programs, um, our recreation programs and our aquatics, uh, team are, are all a part of that. Um, and I know you guys know how to contact me, but for the public, please follow us on social media. Um, and that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And we're joined by Councilwoman Erica Strasburger and Councilwoman Bobby Wilson. Um, do either of you have questions? Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here today, and thank you for the work that you do every day. It's just, every year, um, when you present the statistics of just the number of meals that you served to youth and to people, um, the number of, um, you know, events that you held, the number of, you think you engaged in summer camps, it's just, it's always incredible, the number of lives that you touch every, every year, every day. And I think it's what, it's the type of work that, um, it's like human infrastructure building that we're built, you know, that makes people feel like Pittsburgh is home. It's so important. So thank you for the work that you and your team do every day. I had a couple of questions, and then one that was prompted by, you know, looking over, um, the notes that we were given by our council budget director and your presentation. So does that mean that one hundred percent of the special events office is moving into this department?
Uh, no, we are, the part that we're.
Okay. Clarify that for me.
Yeah, so the part that we are not absorbing, uh, involves the permitted special events that happen when an external party, um, secures a permit from the city. Uh, the reason that that is not moving to us is because a lot of the logistics, and particularly, like, if they need to have security or streets closed down and all of that, um, it, it heavily involves public safety. Um, so we are taking the side of the team that does all of the events that are held on behalf of the city. So like the Fourth of July, the Great Race, some of those, those big events.
And that makes perfect sense. So that's great. Um, and then, well, so does that mean that, where will Brian Cates land?
He will be in public safety.
In public safety still, okay.
Taking on the leadership role of the, um, permits that happen.
Sure, okay. Great. So that takes care of one question. Um, I asked this to, uh, earlier this morning, um, to Director Hornstein and DPW, but, um, and so I, I recognize that this is mostly a DPW question, but, um, you know, I want to make sure that we are making, that we are ensuring that as many of our, our parks and open spaces and facilities are fully ADA accessible in the broadest sense of the word, right? Like, that it's not just something that is, um, meeting the bare minimum of the ADA, of the American for Disabilities Act, but, or Americans with Disabilities Act, but is actually exceeding that. And that we have perhaps even a database of our parks, our rec facilities, our senior centers, and how, you know, the accessibility components of each of them. So would, um, would love to have that be something that we can work on together. And with outside partners who I know are eager to work on this with us, and the new, you know, ADA coordinator and, um, yeah, I just wanted to hear your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I mean, I, um, first of all, I, uh, I'm really excited about that, um, about that work. I actually went to the public hearing on, um, ADA accessibility that was here, because it's a, it's definitely, um, you know, of, of interest to our department. Um, you know, we work with older adults, accessibility issues there. Um, and so for us to have our facilities and the parks as accessible as possible, um, that just allows us to make sure that we're able to serve everyone. And so it's, it's critically important to us. Um, I, um, would definitely welcome that. I'm really excited about the ADA, um, uh, study that the city is going to do for the city as a whole. And I would really hope that our parks and our facilities are gonna be a huge part of that. Um, I hope that that's a project that I get to be, um, an active role in, because, you know, I think that that's gonna be a good benchmark for us to also see that, like, as we do this work, how are we improving, um, our accessibility? When we notice areas where something's not accessible, how are we working together to do that? And we absolutely do work with DPW on it, those issues, um, identification of the issue. Um, and then also trying to, um, get the right parties together to solve it. So, yeah, ADA accessibility is definitely, um, unbelievably important, because we have so many people, um, from the public who come to our facilities, and if we're truly serving everybody, we need to make sure that those facilities are accessible. Um, so, yeah, I'm very excited about that concept. I love, we love mapping in our department. So, um, I, that's a great concept. I'm excited to, to get into that and, you know.
Eric, thank you. Um, and then we had at the table this week, um, uh, well, on the table this week, a bill to approve the Learn and Earn program and a kind of expansion of the Learn and Earn program, which, um, I'm pleased to hear is going to be more expansive, holistic, and, um, include financial literacy, that sort of thing. And we're discussing tying it back to, looking at the, the data and tying it back to, um, both social determinants of health and kind of how we curb, um, the violence that we're seeing in the city. And it, to me, it ties into the work that you do every day, too, right? Like, that is, um, might be seen as indirect, but I think it's pretty direct. Direct line between, you know, keeping kids and the youth engaged, especially in the summertime. But, you know, when they're not in school, having a place to go, having a safe place to go, keeping them entertained, learning, all of that. And, um, you know, finding pathways to really good activities and, and future vocations. So, um, how does that, how does that currently link up? How do you see that linking up in the future? Um, what does that inter- interaction look like?
Yeah, uh, so currently, we do host a number of Learn and Earn, um, uh, participants, uh, at our facilities. Both our pools and our, um, it's spray parks, uh, we've had them in the past, in our rec centers. Uh, we, uh, so we've worked closely with that. What we've done is we've typically had, uh, direct connection to partner for work that helps, like, link us to an organization that is case-managing, uh, young people, and then we place them, um, in our, in our facilities. We've also actually had some, um, opportunities where we've shared Learn and Earn, um, participants, um, with, between, like, you know, coming to the rec center, working with a park ranger, working with, um, actually our partners, the PPC, um, and having like a holistic park experience by those, end of those young people having like a different week with each, uh, with each of us. Uh, to kind of say, this is all the things that happens in a park. Um, uh, so we've done a couple of different things with, uh, Learn and Earn. We want to do more around technology, like, um, have Learn and Earn students help with our rec-to-tech program. Um, the more that we've worked with kids on coding, how do we then activate, um, coding as an experience, maybe working in our summer camps? Um, I'll also just happen to mention, while slightly unrelated, but I think just as important, we are the, um, highest, uh, employer of young people because of our lifeguards. Um, and other, you know, even at our rec centers, we have young people working. So we employ, um, young people, um, as city employees, um, more than other departments. Um, and so just getting back to young people having something productive to do, um, and, you know, making money and, and all of that, they do that with us also, outside of the program. Yeah, yeah, and this summer, we, um, we actually have been working through a, uh, lifeguard, uh, training academy at Pittsburgh Public Schools. We piloted it at Westinghouse. We have a couple of other schools, uh, that we're looking at, um, expanding it to Perry and, um, Carrick.
And do the summer camps, feet, at all feed into or tie into, or is there, is there, um, any marketing that, that happens to those families then for Learn and Earn eventually?
Yeah, so we have a lot of families who come back year to year for summer camp. Um, we've had young people who have, and maybe it's not particular, I wouldn't know necessarily for Learn and Earn specifically, but we definitely have young people who have been, like, you know, members of our rec centers, who have later become staff at our centers. Um, because they've, it had such a great experience and wanted to be part of that and saw the opportunity, you know, to, you know, to make that transition from participant to employee. That certainly does happen.
I think of our budget director's journey. Didn't, didn't you start as a, um?
Uh, no, I, that, I, that was why I always wanted to work in the Parks and Rec program, because my parents didn't put me in the summer camp. But, uh, we did have, um, campers that then aged out of the youth program that we called counselors in training, that, until they turned sixteen, they would still got, they were like unpaid interns. Um, but, yeah, it was, it was a complete transition, and they became paid, uh, employees and a lot of times supervisors eventually.
So here's just my last question to see if you happen to know, and if you don't, that's okay. I don't want it to be a trick question. But, um, do you happen to know the gender breakdown in the participation in your camps, especially, or in your, your youth activities, especially sports?
I don't, but I can definitely get that. What I can say, just anecdotally, um, is that this last year, um, our softball program was smaller than most years. We weren't able to get enough teams. Um, and so we've actually reached out to, the Pirates have a program specifically around softball, and there's, um, um, some leaders in the softball space that are looking at that, um, because that is a concern, you know, particularly for the older age group of softball. Um, if all of our, um, athletic leagues across aren't, um, at a place where they have older competitive, uh, softball players, like, how can we start to do something now to rebuild that? Um, it was the first, uh, season where we, um, had to combine, like, age groups in that area. But we're definitely working on that, because it was not something we wanted to do. But, yeah, but I can actually get that in terms of, like, you know, all of our other, like, footsall, all of, everything is, um, um, I can, I can certainly get you that information.
And you have know, know where I'm going with this. I want to make sure that we're, you know, we're making it accessible and open to everyone, regardless of how they identify, and, um, that it's, it's welcoming to everyone. And if you ever are interested in expanding to girls' baseball, there's someone in my office who can help with that, so.
I am very aware. I got to, um, um, talk with, um, with Emily about that recently. Uh, we had an event about, uh, Title IX in the city of Pittsburgh, um, and what that means for sports at all ages. Uh, so, yeah, we are, um, we're gonna become a participant in the, um, collective group of folks who've been working on, on those rec issues. Yeah.
Alphabet Trails and Tails, great event this year. It was my first time visiting that, and it was just awesome. So congrats on all the work you do. And, and that event was really, really wonderful. So, thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and Councilwoman Wilson. And we're also joined by Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to, you know, start off by thanking your department. I, uh, and I think we've, we've had some, uh, some moments throughout the year that we've been able to work together. Uh, I really appreciate whenever someone from the community who runs like a, um, like a sports league, they reach out, and they're looking for space, or someone's looking for space in the Healthiak Living Center, that you all are very responsive and go what I think is out of your way to, to figure out a solution. Um, so I appreciate, you know, the investment that you give in those, in those times. Also, you know, I can't let this go, um, this hearing go without mentioning, I appreciate all the work that went into opening Sue Murray this past summer. Um, I think it, I think it was a success on most level, on a lot of levels. And, uh, looking forward to, you know, more pools being opened next year. On that note, any comment on what we should expect?
Yeah, um, so two things I'll mention is, um, one, uh, yes, more pools open next year is a hundred percent our goal, which is why we've been working on things like the Lifeguard Academy. We've actually done some things to keep more of our lifeguards on, um, in the off-season by having those, um, those courses, and that helps us retain, um, leadership, which was a particular challenge in rebuilding, um, who could be headguards and assistant headguards at our pools. Um, the budget currently has budgeted in it for fifteen pools, um, if, and that, I think it's, it might be even beyond there. Um, and so we know right now that, um, uh, Homewood Pool is gonna be under construction next year, uh, which leaves, um, two additional pools, uh, that we're going to be strategizing around how to, how to get to all pools. Um, but with the wage increase for lifeguards, um, you know, we don't think that we're gonna have the same, um, barrier that we did for the first kind of like couple of months of recruiting season. Um, that particular change has made a big difference in our, in our outreach. Um, and like, you know, I mentioned, we did this last semester, um, at Westinghouse. We're hoping to be in more schools, um, you know, in twenty twenty-three early, talking to young people, getting them in the pool, getting them comfortable in the pool. Um, and really trying to be more, um, proactive with our lifeguard recruitment by having an active program at the, at the schools. So that is, um, that is underway. Uh, we are investing in that now, um, with the goal of not having the, um, the lifeguard recruitment, you know, challenges that we did previously.
Hey, great. I, eh, remember the, if you can remember, we had a meeting and, um, DPW was there and, uh, who else was there? Anyway, it was circled around Communications in terms of, of, um, how we can have better communication at, uh, with our parks. You know, so in terms of really what our parks need, so I know there's several, um, you know, several communities or a specific, like, you know, actual group that forms out of a park, like Friends of Riverview Park, or, you know, I know that you have some in your district as well. And just a, a way to communicate with them, uh, better, because it's always, you know, we're like sending all the information over. And appreciate the build-out of the, the Neighborhood Services Team. And I'm wondering, you know, how that conversation we had, and there was some interest there, and to, you know, maybe create some positions. So I'm wondering where we're kind of, like, were you able to fit that conversation into the, the budget talks with the administration? Because I'm, I'm seeing that the communications specialists are actually going to, through actually decreasing the amount of communications we have in the department. So that will all be, like, um, you know, we will rely on the administration to carry the message. Or, or to take all the concerns and carry the message.
So, eh, and one thing I do want to note, um, is that, two, two things. Um, one, um, we have had a conversation with the administration about our communication specialists and have a plan around that, um, by way of that individual still being very much, um, you know, eh, alongside our team. Um, and, you know, handling the communication needs that come from our department, um, while also being better connected to what's being, you know, broadcasted across the city. Um, and so we are working directly to try to make sure that that does not mean that it's less communication coming from us. Um, and we're hopeful that that's not what will, what will occur. Um, but by way of the conversation that you were talking about, um, you know, uh, there's, uh, in our conversations with RAD and some of our, uh, our growth in our RAD space, um, one of the things that I've, um, eh, been including in that, um, has been, um, having someone who is specific to our RAD parks more closely embedded at, at a partnership and, um, coordination level, um, as a start to that. Um, and so I'm, I feel very, um, confident that that will happen this year, um, because we have done that. And that particular person, um, is also gonna be helping with, um, outdoor, um, recreation, um, specifically. Because if you look, we haven't had like a big footprint there, and that would include things like who helps to partner around stuff like a camping initiative, those sorts of things. So trying to build that infrastructure and starting with, with that, um, has been one strategy. Uh, and, uh, the last thing I'll say is that I do, um, I always want to, um, be responsive and come to a meeting. So please, um, when there are, you know, I think one good example is, um, coming to the Riverview meeting. Uh, did spark some really great action that took place and got done. Not everything, but we got some stuff done that hadn't gotten done in a while. Um, I, Friends of Mellon Park, um, I, um, I, you know, talk with them regularly, the Point Breeze Organization, any group, um, that has these needs, like, I want to be available for. Um, and I do think sometimes it's important that it's myself at the beginning, so that I can then see what the issues are and make sure the appropriate people, um, are taking care of them. That said, it's not exactly, um, the full solution for all the parks, uh, but I do think that is, that remains an important thing for us to figure out.
You're right. I failed to mention how much, um, how much responsibility you took on, just to take it on yourself and, and go to those meetings and figure it out. So I really appreciate your time to do that. Um, because, you know, bringing Riverview back up to, you know, where Cause you know, bringing Riverview back up to, you know, where it was that most Northsideers remember, you know, it's just so important because it's such a great park. So I appreciate all the time you've been spending to, to make that, to make all those, those projects happen. And I appreciate, I think, shout out DPW either, but you know, that's all the great work that you all do and collaborate on. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilperson Gross?
Thank you all. Thank you for being here and we appreciate all of your work every day. You've been a really great department to work with. Director Vargas, we're really glad that you're here this year. It's been really great working with you. I guess I'll just follow up on a couple of things some other members mentioned and then I've got some other questions of my own. I'll start off by saying you do a lot of work for a very small part of the city budget. You are probably our most publicly facing department. You touch more of our city residents than any other department. You've got the relationships, the face to face, you're parts of people's lives and we really, really value that. And again, it's, it's less than 10% of the budget, operating budget this year. So it's, it's 1%. It's 1% of the operating budget. Peter, I'm checking, I'm relying on you just to do my math right, right? It's 6.5 million out of a 670 million. 1%. And we, we put a lot on you. And again, we, there's, I think you've got a lot of potential for what we can do for our residents. We talk a lot here at the table about what our residents need and what we can do for them. And you're the ones who are really most involved in more of their lives than any other department that I can think of. So thank you for that. I, I also want to say that I've been asking at other budget hearings about kind of gender impact. And so I'm glad that gender identity and I'm glad that Councilwoman Strasburger opened that door as well. So I, I think I heard a bit of an exchange about athletics especially. But it kind of could go across really all of these different parts of your operations. There's Rec to Tech, there's even for seniors, the Healthy Active Living Senior Center. You know, all of the recreational activities we do. I've been reading a lot recently about kind of centering women in city and city planning. And I've got a book on my shelf called Feminist City, I think. And so if we're, we're not reducing, I hope, our recreation, probably more so than in the seventies or eighties, where some of my constituents remember. But you know, when we think about kind of all of the recreational programming that we're offering, kind of how much of it is just athletics? Because sometimes to get more female identifying participation at every age group, maybe it isn't only sports, right? Is there anything you can think of?
Yeah, yeah. So we actually, we have a lot of activities that are not in the, in the sports field that happen at our rec centers. I'll give a couple of just high examples and including our summer camp. The way the summer camp's even structured is that it is both active and also enrichment. So the arts, we do a lot around the arts. And to your point, it crossed the board. We have, you know, kilns at a number of our senior centers. People are doing pottery, are making arts and crafts that are really like, I mean, that can be sold. I mean, we have these beautiful wreaths that seniors are making at the Beachview Senior Center. And then for young people, yeah, we have the same thing. We've done media technology, like kind of getting more involved, not even just in, just coding, which is for everyone. And actually this last summer, we had four instructors and three of the four were female instructors. So I always think it's really empowering for young people to see themselves and the instructors that are actually teaching those things. And particularly since we know that in tech, you know, there's a gender gap by way of pay and access and, you know, in the tech industry. So that's really important to us. And then we also do a lot around culinary and that's actually been, yeah. We have a really awesome food program that actually was started at Langley in the after school. It was modeled after what we've done at Langley to have like this kind of culinary experience. We've done it now at Poulsen, we have a food program. And then at the, all of our summer camps, we had professional chefs from Kraft who came in and taught about the elements of pizza. And every young person, you know, worked in teams to make their own pizzas and understand the difference between the different cheeses and the different sauces and why tomato sauce is different than the sauce, you know, just really cool things like that. So we are doing more than traditional rec in our centers. And part of Rec to Tech is also to get us to be able to do even more of that.
I'm really enthusiastic and excited about that. Go ahead.
Can I, I just want to add this. I love what you said because when, there was a time I was acting center, acting director for the department and I looked at that, that was so important to me that we found programs for women that they were able to do things other than just the sports activities. Because we wanted, I went to McGee one day, I'll, I'll put this out there. I went to McGee one day and I went in there and I saw all these boys. I said, where are the women in this program? Where are they? We need to include the women. And now we have them coming in. I gave them the directive of you need to find something for the women to do. We can't have this all about just the young men coming in. And that was the change. That was the start that, yes, we are funding programs for women. We do programs for women and we've been following through with that all these years and making sure there are other programs as Catherine talked about. Cause it's so important that we include everybody, everyone, you know, not just women. Handicapped persons, young people, everything that we think of, the whole mix of race, gender, everything in our centers. It's really important. I, I realized that years ago.
I love that. Thank you for that. Thank you for not just seeing it, but taking action so that we can, so we can kind of keep pushing forward there. And also I, I reached out probably a couple of months ago now after I had toured West Penn Rec Center in Polish Hill because there was a kind of life skills for disabled adults program there. And I really want to thank you for making space for that at the rec center and, and ensuring that that program is supported and can continue. Because I know it's really important to the staff there as well as the neighborhood. So everybody feels really good about it and it's a great program. I, I'm so excited that there's both maker things, kind of, there's, there's a kind of, in my mind, an overlapping Venn diagram between tech space and maker space. And then this kind of like food, we're now calling it food systems, right? So everything from food production to food processing and retailing and distribution. And it's a really, I know there's a lot of enthusiasm. And it's really where a lot of our kind of like newer businesses and younger businesses and entrepreneurship is at the neighborhood level. So I think it's a really neat overlap and it sounds like you've got, touching some of those programs. I'm, I'm such a crush on the craft program at Chatham. And pre-COVID especially, they're putting out all these things on their Facebook page of like classes they were taking from like how to butcher an entire cow to like how to make Indian spices in your own and like kind of how to make your own yogurt, like everything in between. And I kept thinking like, oh my gosh, I want to take all these classes. But I was, I think these are my retirement, I'm looking for like retirement things I could do now. But I, let's talk a little bit more about food. We also found ourselves recently approving your $900,000 budget for your, it's basically summer food program?
It was both.
Okay, so it's year round?
Yes, year round, the rec centers and after school and summer.
Thank you. Okay, so after school and summer. And, but we know that's not enough, right? And we know that there's been, there's something like almost 10% inflation this year in, in the food sector and 8%, I think the year before. And so that budget has not grown. And so you could probably feed more people if we gave you more money.
Yeah, one of our, and, and just one of the challenges with that particular program is that every year, because the cost of food production is going up, we have, we partner with Pittsburgh Public to help us by be the food producer. And we renegotiate our rates for every meal and our rates for meals go up. Our contract isn't necessarily, so it does become a little bit and a little bit more crunched with each year when the trend is that production is up. And so we understand, like, you know, we have operating costs, they have operating costs. And us trying to kind of navigate what that looks like can be a little tricky. We do always come to a, a space where we can operate, but that's one of the real challenges in that, in that budget. Is that just the trend over time? It's like, that's going to continue. And our food program budget is a hundred percent from that contract.
Okay, so right, so that all of the money we've allocated is going into that contract?
Yes.
If you wouldn't mind us spending just a little bit of time speaking to the rules around food? Because we've heard a lot of public comment over the last couple of years. Especially how it kind of was actually better both in kind of kids' foods programs and senior food programs, which is separate from here. So you can separate your comments if you want, that there were, you know, we were distributing take home meals like crazy, both out of Parks and Rec and it really, really stepped up. And the previous directors in the room really, really stepped up and responded to the community need by setting up satellite, something like 20 satellite partnership, drop off locations. And people were able to get stacks of meals that they could, you know, feed little brothers and sisters with or, you know, feed family members with. But we're back to the old rules now. And so I'll just let you talk to about, how, how is the source of funds or the contract tied to? Some of the rules that we're, we're hearing aren't working for everybody.
Yeah, so I'll, I, I'll speak on the youth side.
On the senior side, what happened was with the county, they have rules about how they're going to provide the meals for us. And I know that we had frozen meals during COVID and the people would come, they necessarily didn't want to, you know, they're not always participants in our centers, but they signed up for the centers so they could get the frozen meals. And now we're back to hot meal service where they need to come to the center and eat their meal. They can't take a meal home with them. And so the county sets that mandate that they have to eat the meal, hot meal in the center. They won't offer us, and we've asked them, can we have frozen meals and hot meals? And it just, they won't allow that.
But again, I want to be clear so that everybody understands what we're talking about. That is not our $900,000 allocation.
Oh, that's the seniors.
It is the seniors, which are completely separate from the city budget. Because it is entirely paid for by the county.
Yes, yes.
I just want to be clear because we have two, two separate pots of money.
And that money is in the senior.
Right, right.
And that's in the senior trust fund, yeah.
And then so, and then with the $900,000 in the PPS contracts?
So that is a federal, both are federal programs administered at the state level. So the rules around it and the waivers that were received so that we could do take home meals were federal waivers. So there were waivers on, you know, the congregate feeding sites having to be congregate during COVID. And there was an extension of a waiver that passed this last year. I mean, one of the things that I have heard that is positive, but not necessarily like locked in at this point, is that people do recognize that the waivers provided greater access to families. It didn't dictate how you get food. It's not saying like, we want to give you food, but you have to, you have to get it in this way. It allowed for flexibility for families to.
The complaint was that especially around the, for the kids meals, either the after school or the summer program meals, that they weren't allowed to leave the premises with even a crumb of that food. So imagine trying to stash, you know, whatever snack bar or cookie for your little brother or sister at home and being forced to throw it in the garbage instead.
Yeah, and that is, I mean, that's, that's definitely part of the, so when you get into the details of the rules, you cannot leave anything, you can't leave with any of the food. There's a lot of regulation of that food. And then during COVID, what we also had though, we had different donations come in from other folks and we were able to distribute beyond what we distribute through that contract. And so that was also unique. We, we got out a lot of meals. We did family dinners that went home to families that were outside of our traditional food contract. And I do think that those offer really important additional nutrition, you know, support to families.
So the picture I'm painting here is that the $900,000 that we approved for the after school and summer meals for kids is entirely bound up in the contract that has the rules that we don't like.
Right, but I will say, yes, but it, it does provide a really important.
Yes, no, I'm not saying it isn't, right? But if there was additional funds.
Then we could do creative things.
Then they could be outside of that contract hypothetically.
Right, it would allow, it would provide an opportunity to do things that were not bound by that particular contract.
So both things are true. That contract is actually not even enough money. We could do more of that contract and you could feed more people with it. You could provide more food. But then also we could have another line, again, kind of over here in the after school and summer meals things. We could add more money outside of that contract with a different contract that has more flexible rules. If we chose to.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that wouldn't be something we couldn't do. And because we've done it, I mean, during COVID, we were operating both that plus the support that we received to do family dinners and different take home opportunities for families.
Right, and so, yeah, I just, I just really needed to get that off my chest. So I appreciate that because it's been, it's been, we've heard a lot of public comment about it and it's really something that I think we should put more energy into problem solving. So a fun topic, right? Let's shift to, you've got in non-personnel changes, there's additional funds for farmers markets. And I'm actually looking at just the kind of additive funds. So I'm not looking at the place where it shows me total.
So what we, what we actually did is we moved the farmers markets programming outside of the special events trust fund. And that was intentional because special events is, so if you go back, farmers markets originally were not part of the special events purview because they aren't necessarily events. I mean, they truly are a service to the public. And so part of revamping the farmers markets is also to connect it more closely with our other food programs. So kind of having it be its own thing, it's a lot. I mean, I'm just going to be real, I've been learning a lot about farmers markets and what's going on out there. And there's so much potential, which is fantastic. But there's a lot to do to kind of rebuild our farmers markets footprint by way of the ones that the city operates. We have partners that also have wonderful farmers markets. And making sure that we're present and that the quality of the farmer's market isn't dependent on the fact that it's a well-resourced neighborhood, that, you know, everybody's there to buy. You've got to think about the fact that it's a bottom line for farmers. But when, you know, we only have a handful of market folks up at the Carrick Market. To me, that means that we're not providing the same level of service as we are in like Squirrel Hill. So how do we make sure that all of our markets are just as strong so that all residents are getting access? And even if you think about like, you know, access out in the West End, like how do we also make sure that the footprint of markets?
Thank you for thinking about access out in the West End, but go ahead.
Seriously, like, I mean, if you, so part of thinking about farmers markets, I think we need to think of it more as a service that's being delivered and less as an event. Even though it is an event and we want the spirit of a farmer's market event to be there. At the end of the day, we are creating access to fresh fruits and vegetables to families and, and to community members. And that access has to look the same. And that's going to be tricky because it involves making sure also farmers, you know, make their ends meet and that we're providing an equitable amount of service to city residents as it relates to fruits and vegetables.
I couldn't agree more. I think that food markets and public markets are actually a core function of cities. Almost the reason cities began to exist, right? So I think it's really important and we should not act like it's just fluff. Really making sure that we are, you know, that our citizens have a market for food is one of our critical core functions and can actually get what they need on a daily basis. So another one of our happy, fun and, but also topics I'm really happy to see. I don't know that you covered the additional funds for the City Farms program. And, but it's been wonderful working with your new staff and thank you for kind of agreeing and, and seeing the potential of Parks and Rec to add support for urban ag and community gardens as something that is a service to residents.
Yeah, so we got them started late this year. So they've been on the, hitting the ground running the last two months, two part timers who are, really at this point, they've been getting to know the, who the growers are. So we've done some work to get to know the folks who are involved in adopt-a-lots across the city. We've done some work to get to understand the folks who are part of our DPW managed community gardens, the gardens that exist in the parks. And the goal of it is to then figure out what does it look like for us to, to support food producing across all, the entire city. So to kind of take some of that work and make it work for every district. And so we're just at the very beginning of that. So we have in, you know, the new year, that will definitely be some new energy and we'll be coming to all of council districts to have that conversation.
So I'm really, it's, it's really great to have a city department proactively engage and support this, but is citizen-led mostly, right? So mostly adopt-a-lots and the community gardens on, on farms, but also. but also the kind of independent farms that have popped up on, on city parks have really been initiated by the people in those neighborhoods. And so to be able to say like, sure, you know, yeah, we can help you or, you know, yes, you were definitely allowed to do this here has been really great, right? So it was kind of like they were just hitting walls before and not getting clear city kind of cooperation. And so it's been a really great change this year and I really appreciate that. We've had them show up to do tree plantings, just being able to, like we do for people when they're doing kind of litter cleanups. It's like, yeah, you know what? We're going to show up at the Orange Fest and we have gloves and, you know, we'll come and make sure the stuff gets picked up when we leave. To be able to have city departments, DPW and Parks and Rec, you know, coordinate to be like, yes, we can dump off wood chips on the day that you need them so that they're there so you can do your tree planting. And yes, we have shovels. And, you know, to have just the basic cooperation has, has been really, really great. And we have, this year, I actually don't have the exact count for this year. I know that there's been something like on top of the annual vegetable gardening, 150 food trees planted in my district in the last two years. So the pawpaws, persimmons and hazelnuts are all native. Elderberries, juniper berries. We have a whole list now of kind of native species that neighbors want to plant and to buy every meat. It's also better because they're fighting the invasives on our hillsides and in our forests. And kind of re, bio-remediating them so that they're more stable. And, and then food bearing as well. So we're really excited about that and the directions that we can go in. I won't belabor it, but I'm really glad to see that we are committed to opening more pools. Again, I give you credit for helping us figure out how that we can keep our, our personnel recruiting them and then keeping them year round. So really appreciate that. And again, anything that council can do to be helpful, we, we want to do so.
Well, and I'll just say, we will be getting the information out about the right January, early this year. The minute we're allowed to post those positions, we'll be posting them. And we hope to do info sessions and more outreach in everybody's district so that we can really say that we're trying to find as many eligible lifeguards, people who want to work at our pools as possible.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll stop there. Thank you both. It's been wonderful working with you and let's all go.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And I'm just going to ask a question for Councilwoman-elect Barb Rorwick, who's actually attended as many meetings as all of us, if not more. So I just want to thank her. She's always sitting over the side there. She just has a question. She'd like, she's interested in piloting some satellite programs for seniors and kids in the 31st Ward at the Presbyterian Church and possibly at Mifflin School. Is there any money in the budget, in the 23 budget for new initiatives like that?
So in the current senior budget, not specifically, there isn't, but there is a way. And actually, this is something I've talked with Councilperson Strasburger about too, for Oakland. We have the ability to do satellite programming through our senior centers, which would mean that, what that means is that like, I'll give an example of Hazelwood also programs and provides meals at Glen Hazel through the Housing Authority. It's not our regular programming. It's more limited, but it allows for us to activate a space. And what I would say is that because the senior program is fully funded by the county, we are, you know, NCDBG, and you'll notice that there was some extra money put in there. That is because it's similar to the food program. Every year, it gets tighter and tighter and tighter because the money doesn't necessarily change. We can look at what it would mean to do satellite programming in partnership with that organization and then see, you know, I'll have to think, what's the closest senior center to that area?
Either McGee at Greenfield.
Greenfield, yeah. So we could do some partnership things and then if it blossoms enough, look into what it means to create it more holistically. And same with Oakland. We were looking at doing some outdoor programming potentially in spaces in Oakland in partnership with the South Side, which would be the closest senior center. And what, so that allows us, we actually will get reimbursed on satellite programming. So one of the things with the county is that we get points for how many activities we do. So we actually win by, by doing this too. It doesn't necessarily, it's not a negative to go out and do additional programming in other places. It's the same thing if we, when we take seniors offsite. But anyone can participate and be a member of that. Yeah. So, so yes, but not, not, I mean, there's a way to do it. It's, our budget is not diff, hasn't changed.
But you'll be working with her when she gets elected. And when she's sworn in, schedule a meeting with her, please, and then get that, get that started. Okay? You good with that, Councilwoman? Okay. Just making sure. And for me, I, I get upset because we don't have a farmer's market in, in all of District 2. But part of Ebony Lunsford, Farmer Girl Eb's success has been, we haven't had a farmer's market in District 2. If you know who she is, when, actually, it was my future daughter-in-law said to me, hey, do you know Farmer Girl Eb? And I said, I have no idea who you're talking about. She says, she's on your Facebook page. Anyway, we connected and she started selling produce from, that she grows in Sheridan, out of a corner market that I negotiated with some other developer to give to the community. And she started selling produce there. Kristy Porter saw her on social media on my page. And then she contacted her and asked her if she could provide produce for 400 people. And then from there, somebody offered her a space. We offered her, Shelley Danko Day has been amazing. She offered her a, Love Your Block Lots, two of them that were abandoned. And now it's a farm and she teaches kids farming. And she opened a storefront and she's getting ready to open another. So all that came because we didn't have a farmer's market in our district, but now she's pretty busy. So we need a farmer's market in our district.
Well, in our, Shelley took our two part-time city farms folks on a tour out in that district and they got to see it. I wasn't able to make that particular one, but I am excited to.
Yeah, the Secretary of Agriculture came in to meet, to see her farm.
Oh, wonderful. Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah, I didn't get to go. I had counsel. But, you know, it was, it was good for her. But what I'm trying, what I want to say is that we need a farmer's market in our district again. And even if it's just a pop-up site here or there, I mean, just think differently, think outside the box a little bit to bring some to our neighborhoods. And our area is so spread out because I think we have the most geographic miles in our district. The directors are looking down, see if I'm right. But we have the most geographic miles in our district. We spread out that far. So if you do something in the West End, it doesn't cover Bangsville, it doesn't cover Mount Washington, it doesn't cover Duquesne Heights. And oftentimes it doesn't cover Ferrywood, which is, or, you know, some of the other further neighborhoods. So for me, pop-up sites or little sites here and there would be, would be something I would hope that you would think about. And also, I, I know you do a lot at Langley, but I also want to say that there are several other schools in my district that I hope that, you know, that could use some help too. I mean, Bangsville, Westwood, Greenway, PCA, that building, which is where Crafton Heights, the Mountain View Apartments are, and there's a lot of immigrants in that area and a lot of single-family households. So some programs up in that area would be helpful to them as well. And Whittier, who is in Mount Washington, everybody thinks is so wealthy. I mean, it has a lot of poverty behind Grandview Avenue. So I hope people don't forget about those, those areas. And tell me a little bit about the sports part. I, I heard you talking a little bit about, just give me a little, little synopsis of, of what you're thinking.
Yeah, so we, we are doubling our capacity there with the hope to get involved in more sports. Like right now, we've had one, he's awesome. Steve has been running our city sports. And it's been, because it's just him, we've been on sort of a calendar of sports we can be involved in. So the two things that I foresee this individual doing is expanding what we can offer and how we can support teams. And then also building like more strategic partnerships with those teams. I feel like, you know, because Steve is so focused on the operations of leagues, we're also not thinking about how we are bringing like, how do we understand sports in the city? What are we saying about how we as a city support that? We're, we're going to be working pretty closely with Public Safety, with the Stop the Violence work. I already, the Assistant Director has reached out to me about getting that conversation started, about, you know, if groups are being supported, how do we also offer support? So we definitely see it as that. And to be, you know, we got that all started last year. We definitely made deeper connections with teams based of the money that was allocated, you know, through, through the grants process and got to know more sports leagues that way. And I foresee us just increasing our, our ability to do that, working in partnership with folks like, you know, what's going on with Stop the Violence Trust Fund and really trying to create, you know, in a year or two from now, I would hope we'd be able to say as a city, here's all our sports teams serving kids. Here's how we're supporting them. Here's what we know about what we're all doing together. This many kids are involved based on all these great partners, that kind of thing.
But most of the athletic associations did not receive Stop the Violence funding. So I want to make sure that we're not forgetting all those other organizations, because most of them did not receive it. And so just, although I, I understand the goal, I want to make sure that we're not leaving other people behind.
Oh, definitely not. And we, we partner with a lot of teams out, and I'm still learning myself more about the Stop the Violence.
Yeah, yeah, I think we all are. So we're excited about Short Chose Spray Park, I want to say that. But I also think like in, in absence of a rec center in my district, which I'm getting really upset about, just grilled poor director, full instinct about the Stevens School Building.
We're excited about that.
Yeah, when it finally opens. I hope I'm living. But anyways, I'm getting old. But anyway, one of the things I, in an absence of that, I would like to see more programs from city parks in just our actual parks. We put that, they put, DPW put an amazing park in, in Elliot. It was a million dollars to do the park, the walk, the drive, the street next to it, the wall, everything. It was a beautiful park. And it was like a week later, it was almost totally destroyed because, you know, kids are going there with no supervision. So it'd be nice to have somebody doing some programming in those playground areas where there, where you know there's a lot of kids that come, you know, just to get, to get away and to do things. It'd be nice to have some, some supervision in the parks for the kids. And I know that parents would be ideal, you know, but a lot of their parents, some do, but there's some with some, some issues and some concerns. So it'd be nice if we could supplement that somehow. So just, I like to keep that in mind. And then the Brian Katz, he's, you said he's staying with special, he's staying with Public Safety. Okay. And he's doing just the permit party?
It's, yeah, it's all the permits of events that other folks hold that aren't the city. So like the Grand Prix, is that the right name of it? You know, all of those kinds of events. And then also all the filming permits and all the use of public space that is permitted out. That's my understanding of, that will be like all the external permits will stay with Public Safety and then we will take on all of the internal events. So.
And how many people are you getting from that office for next year?
Um, four, five, six, six.
Six, mm-hmm.
And who, who's going to be the lead person there?
The supervisor is Beth, who is the current assistant direct, or assistant manager. And so to recalibrate that, we, because there's not a manager, there's not, you know, assistant, we made that person supervisor and then the coordinators are all still coordinators.
Do any of them get pay increases? Or any of them getting pay increases?
Not beyond the, the 2%. But what we did do is we are making sure that all coordinators in our department are being paid the same because now they are all in our department. And so you might see that some coordinators, like our coordinators have been traditionally paid less as a result of, for whatever reason. So, so now we're making sure that because everyone's in our department, that, that pay is equal.
I really wish we would get all those things, like, just like some.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a job for Director Pollak.
Everybody will be, who are our, our program coordinators or in our union will all have that same rate.
Okay. And I, I have other things, but I'll call you about them. I just, you know, wanted to go over some of those things. I just want to make sure that that's, I really want to, that you understand. I really want something, some kind of farmer's market or something in my district.
Oh, can I add something?
I'm going to say this again. Anytime you're doing anything in my district or across the city, I want to make sure you think north, south, east, west and central, like we did when we worked with Pittsburgh Public Schools and wireless neighborhoods. Well, is that where we worked, right?
Yes, yeah.
Different places. Wherever, you always think, you know, the sectors of the city and then central. So that, that way you're not excluding or leaving any part of the city out.
May I add something, Councilwoman?
Please.
I just want to tell you, I hear a council, I don't know if you're aware of it, but this month for our senior centers, we are doing a Christmas party for them. And we had one already and there's one today. They're absolutely loving it. We have taken them to the Marshall Mansion and it's all decorated. It's called a Country Christmas. Camilla Richmond has decorated the mansion so beautifully. And we are taking them there. We've been taken there. We've doing our shuttle, city shuttles and we're driving them over from their centers. And they're getting all dressed up for Christmas, the seniors are. Because of COVID, you know, they enjoy some celebration. And we know some people don't have families. So what we're doing is we've provided them with a lunch, a box lunch. And then we're having a program for an hour. We have a string quartet that's playing for them for an hour program. And then we have a chef that's come in and he's giving them a demonstration on how to make icing. And they, we've provided them cookies and they are sitting there decorating the cookies. And then we take pictures of each center. We're doing three centers day on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We've been doing them. And they are just so thankful and so happy that we are doing this for them because we really care about them and they're really enjoying themselves.
So can I just say that we really enjoy and, and are really appreciative of the work that you all do? And, and for me in my district, and I know the others probably feel the same, but their districts, the center directors do an amazing job.
They're wonderful.
I mean, and, and the, and I want to say Pat Freeze is not a director, nor does she ever want to be.
And she won't. I wish she would. I agree with you. She's amazing. She cares about each person.
She's retired and she doesn't want a full-time, she doesn't want a job like that.
The offer, yeah.
I mean, honest to goodness, she's amazing. And, but her, Norrine, Julie, they all do a great job in our district. So thank you very much for, for all of them and for the work that they do and you do with them. So thank you. Thank you all.
Okay.
And I'll email you the other stuff.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman.
And we're going to get right into our next hearing. And it's the, also the Department of Parks and Recreation, the trust, oh no, we did that one. Park Tax Trust Fund. And we'll start with Director Pollak. And who would you like to join you? And I'm going to ask you to all introduce yourself to the public and then I'm going to turn it over to Director McDevitt.
Thank you, Madam President. Jake Pollak, Deputy Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget, joined by?
Catherine Vargas, Director of Parks Recreation.
Chris Hornstein, Director of Public Works.
Thank you. Director McDevitt?
Sure. In November of 2019, voters in the city of Pittsburgh approved a referendum that amended the City of Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter to establish a trust fund to collect for the improvement of the city parks. The parks tax shall be funded in part by adding a 0.5 mils to the real estate tax rate. The Parks Tax Trust Fund may also receive monies and contributions from additional sources. A quick overview, like I said, the revenues come from the 0.5 mil property tax increase to City of Pittsburgh property taxes. Expenditures include the improvement, maintenance, the creation and operation of public parks, improving park safety, providing equitable funding for parks in un, under, eh, underserved neighborhoods, securing matching funds, I know, right? Securing matching funds and services from charitable city parks conservancies subject to city council authorization. In summary, there is a total of 53 full-time positions paid out of the Parks Tax Trust Fund, which is an increase of nine and a half positions and which creates an overall increase of $764,444 or 50%. A summary of non-personnel changes, overall, $5,852,186 increase in non-personnel expenses due to $86,000 increase in maintenance, $228,000 increase in machinery and equipment and a $5.5 million transfer to capital. Do you want me to go through this whole list?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Sorry. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Director McDevitt. As the, the summary that was just provided entails, the Parks Tax Trust Fund is one of the city's major trust funds for special revenue accounts. It is the repository for funds collected as a result of the Parks Tax, which was established by referendum, as Director McDevitt mentioned. In fiscal year 2022, revenues into the trust fund were approximately $9 million. And in fiscal year 2023, they are projected to
And in fiscal year 2023, they are projected to be about $10.9 million, which is consistent with real estate tax increase projections across the board. The city began collecting those funds in 2021. During fiscal year 2021, no expenditures were made, which is consistent with, I think, a small C conservative, right, a reasonable approach to the collection and distribution of new tax funds while we don't have a strong record of what receipts will approximate in order to ensure financial responsibility and solvency. So as a result, in fiscal year 2022 to date, we have been spending 2021 receipts exclusively, meaning that 2022 tax receipts have been accumulating into the trust fund. And as a result, the trust fund has a very healthy balance today. Because the funds that are collected to support the Parks Tax Trust Fund are based on a real estate tax millage and we have a strong record of financial performance for real estate tax generally. The fiscal year 2023 budget proposes, for the first time since the tax has been collected, to spend not just prior year collections, but also projected current year funds. So you will see a significant infusion of funding to operations, maintenance, and capital projects in this proposed budget. We project retaining a approximately $4 million ending balance for the year after 2023. So in essence, we would spend the majority of funds collected in 2022 and 2023 in this budget, but maintain a $4 million balance as a bridge to future year collections as a real estate tax. We see the majority of our receipts to real estate-based funds in the at the end of the first quarter. And then some straggling funds coming in over the course of the remainder of the year. So to in order to remain a healthy operating balance in the fund in the first quarter 2024, some funds do need to be retained for continuity of service because we don't see the funds coming into those accounts until the end of the first quarter. So while while you'll see a projecting ended balance here of nearly $4 million, in essence, our our goal is to ensure that the fund has consistently over the course of all operating quarters has an adequate balance. You know, the purpose of the fund as articulated in the referendum that established it is to support maintenance activities within our parks, improving park safety and equitable access. So that includes a combination of funds to support basic maintenance activities, refurbishment of existing park assets, and then further capital investment in our parks. As articulated at the time of its enactment, I think it was broadly understood that with a long history of deferred maintenance owing from our period under financial oversight, that that maintenance and refurbishment activities would take first place in the early years that the fund was in existence. And the budget we proposed is consistent with that focus. As we catch up on that history of deferred maintenance, it's our projection to increasingly spend more on forward-looking capital projects. But even with that focus, for those funds dedicated to capital investment, this administration has focused on the same equity lens that was articulated at the time of the the fund's creation and enactment in ensuring that funds are distributed in ways that allow for accelerated investment in underserved, non-RAD or non-regional parks, such that all Pittsburghers enjoy, you know, access to quality recreational opportunities in our park spaces. So for reasons discussed in the DPW hearing earlier today and in the Parks and Recs, Parks and Rec hearing that concluded immediately before this one, there are investments in personnel that correspond to the projected needed parks maintenance staff in this budget. I believe we reach the projected need that was articulated at the time of the original passage through the the investments proposed in this budget. Significant needs in deferred maintenance requirements, including the equipment and machinery necessary to meet our basic service level goal for parks is included here, as well as numerous investments in capital improvements within parks. The best way to sort of slice that up is that the operating portion of the proposed allocation here is $5.97 million or 34% of the funds available in 2023. So about a third of available funds dedicated to operating costs associated with maintenance. The remaining 66% of funds dedicated to capital projects as prioritized through the equitable investment lens articulated at the time that the the tax was enacted. In fact, of the 20 priority projects listed in the materials circulated at the time of the enactment of the tax, 15 are underway in some way, shape, or form, in which I'm happy to speak to in greater detail. So that's the basics of the the financials of the tax. Directors, if you want to speak to anything further, otherwise, we're happy to take your questions.
I mean, I'll just say that the piece of it that directly impacts like recreation facilities in our senior centers, which are zoned as parks, they are part of the park system, are things like the locker, pool locker upgrades, the fitness equipment, which already has made a huge difference. Many of our senior centers and our rec centers are receiving that because if you've been to a rec center, you've probably seen that the equipment is definitely, you know, isn't up to par with what I think really is usable. And so that has been noted. In fact, just at the West End, we had some folks who sent a thank you letter. It's been a long time coming in that space. So you see some of those things. Those are costs that over the five years go down because once they're upgraded, it's more about upkeep and making sure that we don't find ourselves in a position where we are running on, you know, running centers that don't have the, you know, baseline, you know, equipment that people can actually use. And that that's where we are with the kind of some of the deferred maintenance within our facilities. The other thing I want to mention is one project in here that is really exciting for for recreation is the Shenley Park Ice Rink, which we do recognize is in a RAD park, but RAD is significantly investing in that. And it's an example of an asset that is used by everyone. I mean, we had over 18,000 people there last season. It is a big piece of our seasonal work. And it is a gem. It's the only publicly run facility of its kind in our in our city. And so that is something that, you know, if we weren't able to get this done this year, it's it we may not have an ice rink next season. And that's the very real situation there. So in kind of catching up on some of those big things as it relates to rec, I do feel that the portion, you know, the portion that we're getting for our department is certainly increasing the experience, improving the experience that residents have in our facilities.
Thank you, Director Vargas. To follow up on that, I think that the Deputy Mayor and the Director covered a lot of really great information. To only add, you know, consistent with my earlier budget hearing, you know, it's extremely difficult to separate the vehicles from the people. People need vehicles and equipments to do maintenance. And there's a lot of deferred investment in those vehicles and equipment in parks that this is really being impactful for us. You know, the other the other pieces of that, I want to point out some other Parks Tax-funded projects that were consistent with, you know, the prioritization that was put out to the public. You see in this year's budget, there's a trail asset management plan, you know, to help us get a handle on our ever-growing network of trails, recreational trails throughout city parks. You know, this is necessary to support that work of having, you know, consistently maintained asset class. You know, previous year, we also funded a, you know, pools condition assessment that's along that same line. And those are those are things that allow us to to plan and program both just regular operational maintenance procedures as well as future capital improvements.
And just to build quickly on a point that Director Hornstein just made, the one of the foundational requirements of expenditures from the Parks Tax Trust Fund is that these investments supplement and not supplant fund funding opportunities that would otherwise be available through the general fund. And as it relates to vehicle investments currently proposed for the Parks Tax Trust Fund, I would point to the fact that all of the vehicle acquisition proposals in the current budget as it relates to the Parks Tax are ones that scored lower through the Capital Project Facilitation Committee scoring process than the lowest funded capital project, meaning that sort of by definition, they are necessary investments in our ability to maintain and provide a high level of service in our parks that through just the necessity of of a city that is rebuilding its capacity to fund critical capital investments as we come out of financial oversight would have not been achievable in relation to other priorities. So the fund is serving its designated purpose in providing funds that would only be available to park investments and would not be achievable without a dedicated revenue source. In some ways, these long overdue but greatly necessary investments in maintenance capacity would, in the absence of the Parks Tax Trust Fund, be much-needed things that, as in many other cases, we would have to simply wait three to five more years to achieve without the availability of dedicated resources when weighed against other critical necessities in public safety or in the maintenance of our right-of-way. So we're achieving, I think, the the voter's intention in accelerating the process by which we invest in our parks through the the use of the fund as proposed here. Thank you.
Thank you, Director, and Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you all. I appreciate the overview. I just want to ask a couple of questions related to the the spirit of, like what I have in front of me, which is the overview, you know, the spirit is explained in the overview, which I think the the paragraph here that I'm looking at, where it says expenditures include improvement, you know, maintenance, the creation and operation of public parks, improving public safety, providing equitable funding for parks in underserved neighborhoods, securing matching funds and services from charitable city parks conservancies, subject to city council authorization. I think that was on the referendum.
That's correct. That's consistent with the text of the referendum.
Pulled it from there. So given that, and it does say include, didn't say ha like, includes. So I see there's some some vagueness there, but I wanted to know what the so what I'm not seeing in here is that matching funds and services from charitable parks conservancies. So I was wondering, what is like, what is the administration's? You know, what is their? So currently, I don't see it in this capital budget, but moving forward in the future, like, like, how is that? How do you see that relationship?
Yeah. So thank you, Councilman, for asking that question. Our perspective, the the administration's perspective, I mean, which we've articulated publicly and also directly to the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy, which was, I think it must be said, was instrumental to the passage and adoption of the tax levy in question, has been, and I I believe this is consistent with the intention of the voters and the dialogue that occurred at corresponding with the passage of the tax, that the fundamental problem that our park system faces is twofold. One is that during the long period in which the city was in financial distress or in the course of emerging from financial distress, had to make difficult choices about what kinds of investments to make first, that that there was a great deal of deferred maintenance on all city assets and that parks assets suffered most from that period. Because when forced to choose between investments in right-of-way infrastructure, for example, which in addition to being a core city asset, is also necessary to connect city residents to emergency medical services or to employment opportunities as opposed to recreational assets, no one, no mayor or council of the city at any point has ever said that parks aren't important. But when forced to make very difficult choices, it was understandable that investments in core infrastructure took greater precedent than parks. And so for that reason, during long periods of time when difficult choices were necessary, the deferred maintenance in parks grew much faster than the deferred maintenance in other categories of asset. Now that the city is no longer in financial distress and our revenues are recovering, and now that we have a dedicated resource to support investments in parks, we have an opportunity to catch up on that long list of deferred maintenance. We also have an opportunity to invest new dollars in forward-looking capital projects and investments in our recreational amenities. But we have, I think, a basic responsibility to rebuild our capacity to do the maintenance on what we own already in line with, but but, you know, with greater primacy than our investments in in new offerings. And so our approach as an administration has been to focus on catching up as quickly as possible on our ability to provide a basic level of service, in this case, parks maintenance service, as we can, which I think is it relates to the intention of the voters in establishing the tax. At the time that the Parks Tax was passed, it was, I think, well documented that the primary, the 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 objective that the voters articulated most clearly was a desire for increased support for maintenance. That that was the top priority. Second to that was rehabilitation or refurbishment of existing assets. And then new investments in new projects came after that. And so to to that end, the budget we've articulated, I think, is an aggressive but necessarily responsive approach to rebuilding our ability to do that work. That includes new positions. That includes support for equipment and machinery to achieve that work. I think it was always understood that there'd be a period of rebuilding in our internal capacity to do that work that preceded expansion. That also aligns with the fiscal state of the city. You know, as as I've talked about at this table before, ARPA funds and the experience of COVID. And at the end of 2024, we retire some legacy debt from the Act 47 period at the end of 2026. Beginning in 2027, the fiscal outlook for the city is very strong, but we have a lot of difficult choices as to make as a group between now and then to improve our service level while maintaining fiscal solvency until we get to the other side of that debt retirement. So we we foresee a scenario in which, having rebuilt our internal capacity to do basic maintenance, investments of all kinds, including investments in partnership, are possible. But our first and foremost responsibility is getting right our ability to do in-house what we've told the residents of the city we are capable of doing.
Appreciate you going over that. I just want to refine what I'm what I'm trying to get an answer here, which is I have I represent a district that has benefited from the conservancy through multimillion-dollar projects. Actually, basically, you could argue that they are the ones that have lifted up the Commons Park. And and the city, I'm not sure the exact dollar, but my understanding is it's very, if there is a dollar, that's very low on the investment made. So they've gone out of their way, that I've seen representing my district, to invest in, let's just say, that park. And it's our oldest park. And they've they've done a great job at that. And I'm just trying to figure out from this administration what, you know, what type of partnership would be created in, you know, I mean, I'm not seeing it here, but in the future. I mean, specifically because it is, you know, in the some of the guidelines here for for the trust fund. And so when I look at these projects, I'm wondering, you know, if we pick some of these projects, like, or even in the future, if we pick any capital projects, my understanding is there is an opportunity to to, you know, gain more funding by partnering for each project.
I I
Or some.
I I I agree entirely with that assessment, Councilman. I I would just say again that with a huge deficit in the city's ability that with a huge deficit in the city's ability to provide its own basic responsibility in maintenance and service delivery to residents, our first objective must be to rebuild that capacity. But...
Well, I'm not referring to the, to the maintenance, I mean, the trucks. I'm just referring to the capital projects.
So even as it relates to capital investment in new projects, among the 20 highest-rated projects in the assessment that was done in relation to the passage of the tax, the city has completed or is in the process of investing in redevelopment projects in 15 of those. So work has been completed at Baxter Park, Granville Park, Townsend Park, Laramo Park, Paulson Rec Center, Fainu Park, and the Bowsmann Street Playground. Work is in progress at McKinley Park. Design work is in progress at Spring Hill Park, Fort Pitt Park, Robert E. Williams Park, Sheridan Park, and Homewood Park. We're currently soliciting design proposals at Jefferson Park, Manchester Park, Chadwick Park, and Garland Park, preparing master plans in Canard Park and at Amen Rec Center, beginning a community visioning work at East Hills Park, and have budgeted funds in 2023 for Eleanor Street Park, which I believe are all on the top 20 list of equity lens identified projects from 2029 when the tax was under consideration. So I think, once again, our point of view is that recovering and rebuilding our ability to do what we can in-house in the early years of collecting the taxes is necessary in order to achieve a basic service level for all city residents upon which future partnerships and collaboration opportunities can be based.
Help me understand. So some of these projects here, so you're saying they're already started? Like, just, like, what do you mean?
Yeah.
When you went through that list, it sounds like they're already started. We already got it out there, so we can't, like, partner with anyone on them. That's what it sounds like.
I actually, I can invite Director Hornstein to speak to that in part. The list I just read to you was meant to indicate that the areas of investment that we've identified are driven by a commitment to ensuring that all city residents have access to high-quality recreational opportunities. The process of partnership is complicated and many-fold. Some of the investments we're making in these locations are what we view to be wholly city responsibilities. And nonetheless, though, I wanted to underscore the point that we take seriously our responsibility with this source of funding to invest beyond the regional rad parks and in all neighborhoods. So, Chris, do you want to just sort of talk to the way in which those projects? You don't need to speak to this specifically, but...
Let me just, I want to just tailor my focus, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Yeah. So the, so just help me understand, because if they spent a mil- if the Parks Conservancy spent a million dollars in the Commons, and I don't think there was, I think there was zero money from the city at the time, you know, so that was definitely a good one for us because we made out, that is not a rad park, and they did that previously. And I'm just trying to understand if there's, you know, a million dollars being spent on some park here, you know, it's not a rad park, and they're willing to take on the work and they can leverage more money, isn't that cheaper for us?
Well, that's a very specific question. I would say ultimately, yes. I think as the Deputy Mayor alluded, partnership becomes layered and, you know, time-consuming, not reason not to do so. And I would note, too, that, you know, we do partner on a variety of projects already under agreement with in-house resources where appropriate and applicable, and some of those do include the Commons. You know, and I would also point out that, you know, there still exists opportunities for projects in, under work to benefit from partnership for work that's under design, where appropriate and applicable, where folks want to contribute.
All right. I just want to make, you know, open that conversation as to, like, how I'm too, you know, I am, on the council side, I'm definitely interested in, you know, the reinvestment in our parks and to figure out a path that we could, you know, gain more for less, so.
Yeah.
That's where I'm, that's where I'm at with it. So I think, I think there's an opportunity here, and I'm just not seeing it in this capital budget in front of me. And I'm, you know, just want to continue the conversation to how we can
Sure.
make that happen, because I know that I've seen District One benefit, you know, from, you know, that conservancy. And, you know, given that it's in the overview here, you know, I just think there's, there's something we could do.
May I speak to that slightly further, Councilman? The, I think that the method of deployment of Parks Tax Funds and the question of additional leverage from partnership are connected to a degree, but not a one-to-one relationship, right? As Director Hornstein was mentioning, we have a strong history, which we celebrate and fully embrace the ability to continue, of leveraging public investment as a catalyst for additional supplementary investment from private sources as coordinated through the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy or others. I think the key question for us here is less the method of deployment of public funds and more so the necessity to catch up on our obligation, our responsibility as a city proper, to make maintenance investments in assets that have been ignored for too long. I think in a world in which we have caught up on that basic responsibility, which the Parks Tax is vital to our ability to do, any manner of other things are possible. And we have no, I think, opposition or predilection against partnership in that context, but we recognize that there are basic things that we need to deliver first.
Okay. Well, I'm interested to continue that conversation as to how we can, you know, you know, basically leverage money that's out there, that's been used in our parks previously, and, you know, just want to continue that conversation. So appreciate your time.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. Councilwoman Strausberger, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for being here today and answering our questions on this. I want to pick up on what Councilman Wilson was asking and ask it a little bit more pointedly. We have about 20 projects, from the time that the September budget came out and to the time that November project came out, budget came out, there were additional capital projects added to this list. And I could pick out any, any one and ask the question, if we're, if any of them come close to, say, a million dollars, I mean, maybe barring the, some of the ones that are very specific, like the Shenley Park ice rink. Why not take that money and expand the project to either take it and move it to a project in a park that is viewed through the equity lens, the next on our priority list, and leverage it for additional funding from outside sources if it was in partnership with our Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy? To me, it feels like we're leaving money on the table. We know that there are philanthropic organizations that are clamoring to help and to help to match anything that is leveraged by the Parks Tax Fund. Even a million dollars towards that could potentially be leveraged, you know, threefold. And we could see 19 other projects come to fruition, some investment in our vehicles, which I'd like to get to in a minute, and also a brand-new reimagined park. We could have everything and, you know, walk and chew gum at the same time, essentially. Understanding that, everything you said, that to be able to position ourselves for future years of true new park investment, we need to be able to catch up on deferred maintenance. We need to be able to invest in our own infrastructure, our people infrastructure and our vehicle infrastructure. But even just one park with investment from us could leverage two or threefold from the philanthropic organizations who wish to do so. Again, it feels like we're leaving money on the table, and that's what I'm concerned, that that could disappear if we don't take advantage of it at this moment.
So, consistent with the cooperation agreement that was established, I believe, last year between the city and the Parks Conservancy, the Parks Conservancy submitted capital budget requests for projects that they envisioned conducting in partnership between the city and their entity with Parks Tax Funds. Those projects went into the same grading and evaluation pool under Chapter 218 of City Code for Capital Budget Project Evaluation, and they scored less highly than those investments you see in the proposed budget. So I guess my direct answer to the question would be that in those areas where partnerships were proposed, the projects proposed for allocation in our budget were seen as more urgent and more critical to achieving our objectives around a basic service level within our park system. I think that partially answers your question in terms of the fungibility, right? That the projects that the city proper chose, proposed to undertake as capital investments in park spaces were those that ranked most highly in that process. And so consistent with that, those are the ones that the administration advanced for funding. To the broader question of leverage, once again, it, I think that, in a world in which not even unlimited resources, but more generally available resources, more could happen more quickly, but having to prioritize, as we do, around those investments to make first, we selected those proposals that had the greatest impact on the equitable access to parks that were presented, and they're reflected in what's proposed in the budget.
And I say this because I feel a responsibility to represent my constituents who have been asking me about this and have, you know, seen news media articles and others that have indicated that exactly what we have in front of us, that there is significant amount of the public funds going toward vehicles. There are questions about that, you know, maintenance and upgrade. I don't think people can have too many complaints about maintenance of our parks, but to feel as if they voted on a Parks Tax and to feel as if that it's not being allocated in the way that they thought it would be, has, you know, been raised to me from constituents. Not only that, we received no fewer than 20 letters from civic and neighborhood organizations in support of the line of thinking that Councilman Wilson and I are indicating. So I do feel a responsibility to raise it. I still maintain that there is a way. I understand and I do appreciate, very much appreciate, the data-driven approach through the kind of budget process and point system, and, you know, I appreciate that that was the method that was really prioritized this year in our capital budgets and applied to this as well. That said, we're in the, we're in the next phase of the budget negotiations right now, which can be a little bit more malleable, a little bit more flexible, which is why I continue to ask for, or press on the issue that any one of these projects could be deferred to next year, even though, you know, through the numerical data-driven process it was decided upon for this year, could be deferred to next year combined, and a portion of that applied to the next, regardless of the four that were proposed by the Parks Conservancy, could be applied to the next park on our list that we know needs to be upgraded, matched, and fully funded for this in future years. So I'd like to move on to my, to the questions about each vehicle. Are we able to go through, what's, one, two, three, four, five? Each of the six vehicles or bullet points listed here to understand what they are and what they will do?
Just happy to.
Director Hornstein, would you be the best to respond to that, or Deputy Mayor? Okay.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. So inspector car?
Yes. As I mentioned in my previous budget, the, we are piloting a Parks Maintenance Inspector. The inspector car is for that position.
Rat packer trucks?
That is to collect waste and litter. Those two trucks are assigned to the largest of our divisions where we know we have the most refuse to collect in the park themselves.
The agricultural tractors?
The agricultural tractors provide a wide variety of maintenance activity, from mowing to aeration, dragging, as well as hauling material.
And the hybrid pickup trucks?
The hybrid pickup trucks will be assigned to Parks Maintenance Foreman.
And the eight one-ton dump trucks?
Again, that's a vehicle that we use to haul materials, things like leaves, debris, tree branches, infield mix, all the variety of things that we need to move around in our city parks for maintenance purposes.
And the skid steers?
Skid steers are a specialty piece of equipment that we use in select areas. They help us with, you know, clearing of difficult-to-reach places. Also come with a variety of attachments that allow us to till the land, you know, provide planting areas, that type of thing.
And so can we get assurance from you that these will be applied to our parks and that not applied elsewhere to the extent that then the parks inherits older vehicles that aren't these vehicles?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I could just add to that councilperson, for reasons Director Hornstein just mentioned, many of them are not applicable to any other type of work that we do. Obviously agricultural tractors and, for agricultural tractors and skid steers, for example, that's fairly self-evident, but we don't presently propose to utilize any of our hybrid pickup trucks in snow operations, for example, because of the difficulty in charging and maintaining them during snow operations. So all of the city's electric truck fleet, whether proposed here or paid for elsewhere, would not be eligible for snow plowing or anything else. So we were intentional in selecting vehicle types that not only would be dedicated to parks, but in fact could only be dedicated to parks in what we proposed as Parks Tax vehicle acquisitions. There are vehicles of multipurpose nature, vehicles that are primarily assigned to parks, but where in a major snow event, you know, it's an all-hands-on-deck moment, and we tap Parks Maintenance Staff to help with types of snow operations. They're always tapped to participate in snow operations within the parks, opening the walkways and, you know, roads within the parks, but they often will clear other types of sidewalks and secondary responsibilities. But the vehicles proposed here are dedicated to parks uses.
The last thing I want to focus on is the commitment to, and this might be semantics, but the commitment to supplement and not supplant. And when I look at the position summaries, not all of these positions are new. There is a position that has been moved over, which, from the Bureau of Facilities, the Senior Project Landscape Architect, which indicates to me that this is not supplementing, that this could exist elsewhere and is really supplanting what could exist in a different bureau.
Do you want me to handle that?
You can start.
Okay. So, you know, specific to that, I mean, you've worked with Andrea many a time. We can all agree that she is 100% dedicated to parks completely and fully in her role. Vis a vis that position, we used that to, make sure that I'm aligned to the correct year. And so the position itself was used to, in that budget transfer, was used to fund a position of foreman in the Construction Division, which, you know, approximately about a third of that person's time in the operating budget is spent working in city parks through a variety of construction projects, as well as... variety of construction projects, as well as a cost estimator position that is for the benefit of all capital projects, many of which are associated with the Parks Tax, as well as an additional, no, those are those are the two that would be covered under under that transfer.
Thanks for that, Chris. And sorry, I just was double checking some notes. If I could put a finer point on on what Director Hornstein just said, it's our assertion that taking a position that had previously had split responsibilities between parks and other work and dedicating it fully to parks and then utilizing freed-up operating funds to create within the general fund budget additional positions or partial position or partial funding of positions that are fully dedicated to operating from works, operating fund projects creates a clearer accounting or delineation between park-specific work and shared work, what had previously been shared work. And so similar to ways in which, I know it's not the hearing today, but I'll just use it as an example, you know, we've driven through this budget to delineate between subject matter expertise or project typology within DOMI to create dedicated units around bridges and structures versus walls and slopes versus sidewalks and and things of that nature. This is intended as an investment that will create a clear total focus on parks for for a position that had previously been split and then create new positions necessary to achieve other non-park-related work. So I I take your your point seriously and I I understand your the reason for your question and I I I'll I'll agree that it's somewhat subject to interpretation, but that's the thinking that went into this this choice on our part.
Thank you all. Those are the extent of my questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Rose.
Thank you, Madam President. So I'm going to change tack a little bit here. We seem to be talking both about the Parks Trust Fund uses, but we're never leaving the Parks Conservancy here in the audience today, hello everybody, out of this conversation. So just sort of some clarity, the Homewood Charter says that the the that the voters voted on says that the city may partner with a conservancy. It is not prescriptive, right? So I just want the listeners to at home to understand, because there was a lot of kind of, I felt, murkiness about what we all were asked to vote on that general election day in 2019, and so there was never a vote for this specific Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy. And so I just wanted to clarify that. And then I don't want anyone to think that this administration or this city council does not work with the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy. I've had many meetings with the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy over the last two months. I've gone on walkthroughs of multiple parks. James, would you bring that over, please? And so as a reminder, this has been a very long, almost three years now. It's been three years since we voted on it. It's been like a full three years since we had all the discussions. I appreciate it. We were having this discussion back at late 2019 and early 2020, but then COVID happened and we all got went into quarantine for a year and a half. So this is a very, very big binder. This is, I don't even think it's totally current because I believe that City Council authorized a new kind of master cooperative agreement with the Parks Conservancy that you might have signed in 2022, but this is 53 active agreements that the city has with the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy. So, yeah.
I I believe the agreement you're referring to, Councilwoman, was signed in late 2021, but it's about five pages, so it wouldn't add much to the the thickness of that binder.
It's not a lot of content, right? So, I mean, this says things like, you know, the Parks Conservancy can, you know, is the is has a master lease on Stanley Plaza, for example, right? So the Parks Conserv- Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy currently, it's not like anybody's written them out of any of these agreements, right, is currently the landlord for Stanley Plaza, right? And so all of if you ever go to the Porch Restaurant, that rent is being paid directly to the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy. It's not being paid to the city of Pittsburgh, right? Now, you as the taxpayer are paying, helping to pay for the gas service, the electrical service, and I think maybe even the internet service for Stanley Plaza and the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy's tenants, but we're not seeing any of the revenue directly, that kind of thing. So there are little cooperative agreements and contracts and there are small ones, but they're very much an active participant. But Frick Park Environmental Center is another classic example, right? We just saw in one of the previous trust funds that there's a there's a specific trust fund that generates, I understand, about $800,000 a year in revenue for Frick Park and that that check is cut to the Parks Conservancy each year. So I might not have that exactly right, but it has at times been, I think, an $800,000 check. So they are currently receiving city funds. Now, and I've said it before and I haven't said it for three years, but that if Peter, if you've got that information, it'd be helpful. It may be lower because it's the.
No, you're pretty close. The anticipated 2023 revenue that we have is $858,500.
Okay. And so, right, and so because we've, again, given them a contract, so they're the vendor, they're like the operating vendor for that center, that, you know, we're paying money to the conservancy, the Parks Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy specifically. Well, it's, you know, in its first year of these very many agreements, some 20 years ago, the Parks Conservancy raised money and wrote a check to the city, from my recollection, is about $270,000. And so and that that was the mission that it started with. So it's a very different relationship today. Again, it's been three years, so we haven't been talking about it, kind of like, at what point in these agreements is a line crossed into privatization of operations that I think we should be very mindful of and that I'm not supportive of? And I'm supportive of keeping our operations in our own employees and our own organizational chart that ensures that they are the residents of the city of Pittsburgh and that our dollars are going to residents and that this is, you know, you know, the reason we're here, I think, right? And so and not to to privatize operations. I just didn't want anyone to have any misapprehension that what they've heard on the news in a news story means that we've stopped working with the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy, because this is a very, this is a very heavy book. And so I'm going to go set it over here for a second. I also have in front of me, again, the three years ago before the voters voted on the referendum, material straight from the Parks Conservancy website. And what was being encouraged at the time by the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy was a vote for the referendum that had a kind of, you can't see it on my little tiny screen, but there's a kind of, there's four bubbles. And it says that over the next, over new funds over six years, 18% would go to capital projects. 18% would go to capital projects. It also says 20% of the new funds over six years were encouraged, now, this is can't be a guarantee because it's a nonprofit encouraging a referendum vote, would be suggested, that they themselves suggested that 20 of it would go, again, to like rehabilitate. So let's just call those all capital projects. That's 38%. What I'm seeing in front of me in the mayor's proposed November expenditures for the Pittsburgh Parks Trust Fund is 66% going to capital projects. And so we're double, not quite double, but nearly double, the the amount that we were all imagining when we, you know, voted or not didn't vote for it in 2019. So I I don't see any inconsistency here. I actually think there's more commitment to capital projects than, again, it's been three years, so, you know, we've gotten a little fuzzy, so I went back and looked back through, well, what were were the notes, what were the conversations, what were the things on the websites from three years ago? And so while people might complain about it now or want it to be different, I don't think there's any dis- nothing disingenuous going on, right? This is this is completely consistent with what was talked about. In fact, if we wanted to be more perfectly consistent, you would have even more to vehicles, even more to personnel, and even more to maintenance. So that wasn't a question. Went on a little bit of a rampage there. So.
Could I respond to some aspects of that, Councilwoman? Thank you. First, to to your last point regarding accounting, I I would agree both in terms of your characterization of the proposed budget and I think we're looking at the same materials from 2019, so your your calculation there as well. You know, we I think we heard loud and clear that the plurality request from city residents was for investments in maintenance and have so prioritized them. But at the same time, you're also correct, as I as I mentioned earlier, you know, of funds for operating activities which roughly correspond to to maintenance. We're proposing about 34% of revenues, so yes, about 66% then in turn are going to capital investments, which is greater than the combined share of rehabilitation and capital from that that earlier period. Going back to your prior point about partnership, yes. And in fact, I appreciate you providing this opportunity to state clearly and for the record how much we value the partnership we have achieved with the Parks Conservancy on projects to date and how much we look forward to future partnerships with them, where it fits into the overall needs of city residents and the ways in which private funding can maximize opportunities to deliver the highest quality product. But as it relates to parks that we presently own, which require reinvestment, and as it relates to basic maintenance activities that are correctly the responsibility of the public as the owner and operator of the parks, as you you very well pointed out, as you know, as it relates to the question of truly public ownership and administration, I I believe that our proposed allocations are reflective of both the openness and willingness to partner where appropriate, while also taking seriously the public responsibility to take care of what the public owns without without inviting private actors into that space unduly.
So, yeah, I'm going to go on a little bit of a tangent about the privatization of operations again. I was talking about it a lot three years ago, and so, you know, we're just getting back to it now, that in other cities, there have been allegations of racial discrimination by private operators, right? And so where a city leased out operations for its parks, there have been allegations and protests around people getting differential treatment. We don't want that here, right? I'm not pointing any fingers, I'm just saying that when we look around at the things that can happen, we need to be vigilant, right? That we are allowing our parks to be for all residents, and it's very important to everybody in the city and it's important to us here. There have also been mishandling of funds and payments so that there were lawsuits and actual liens placed by unpaid vendors on Pittsburgh's, on not Pittsburgh's, but other cities' parks properties. Imagine having our public property, having business liens against it, that kind of thing. So we want to be very vigilant that we don't, that we track this money and even these 53 agreements. This council voted to make sure that the city controller audited these agreements. And I point to it especially because we didn't have those in hand when we all vote, had that referendum on the ballot in November. This council almost had, I introduced a resolution that council should have all of the cooperative agreements on record for the Parks Conservancy. This council didn't vote on that resolution because the administration kind of rounded them all up at the time in 2019. There were only some 19 that were on the city controller's website. Of that huge book of 53, every single one of them should have been on the controller's website. So I just want to remind you all that there should not be kind of little agreements at Parks and Rec or at DPW that are just in a drawer and not at council and not on the controller's website moving forward, because that's what had been happening, right? And so the public didn't have the the agreements and city council didn't have the agreements in our legislative system. We had, we had those read into the record, I believe, so that they should all be publicly available. So if you want to go there now and look back in December of 2019, you should be able to pull up all of those agreements and you should be able to see them on the city controller's website. And we want to make sure that we continue doing that for all of our cooperative agreements with various nonprofits moving forward. And so and so there's that. My last thing that, again, is picking up on conversations that we had at post-agendas and that we had at public hearings at this table back in 2019, early 2020, is that I don't agree with that equity plan. And I I said it once, so I'll say it again on the record. I, when we had a post-agenda, we had the Parks Conservancy at this table, I held up the Femisphere Plan, which is a a map of where the poorest households in the city of Pittsburgh are, and 70% of them are female-headed households with children. And it, you know, we were talking a lot of the time about how people should be within a 10-minute walk of parks. And I said, why aren't, why isn't the Parks Targeting Plan map look like this map? And then, so I have in my emails, a series of emails after that going back and forth, and I said, what, why, why are you missing all of these neighborhoods? And the Philadelphia consultants finally go back to me and say like, well, maybe, maybe we kind of misrepresented our plan and not everyone really is within a 10-minute walk of a park. And basically, we we deleted a whole bunch of census tracts in doing that equity plan. And so I'm very concerned about that. And I think we need to revisit and do our own equity plan, because I I think that that equity plan from the Philadelphia consultants that were was not ours, we never adopted it, we didn't approve it, should be reanalyzed, because I think that it was a plan for where are existing parks, which is not, not the same question as how to treat people fairly and equitably.
I'll say something to that quickly and then I would would invite Director Hornstein to speak to it further if if I miss something. When I when I highlighted overlap between the investments we've made in the past few years and the prioritization in that plan, my my point was to emphasize the ways in which, you know, our investments have been consistent with what was articulated to the voters at the time in advance of adoption of the tax, simply to say that I I agree generally with with a number of points you've made, Councilwoman, which is that the investments we've made or proposed to make are not inconsistent. I also agree with you that that plan is not formally adopted and it is not the sole or maybe even primary driving factor in our assessment. It's a, one of, I wouldn't call it a benefit, but one of the consequences of such a long history of deferred maintenance is we have no shortage of places in which we can acknowledge investment is necessary and and can target that in an equity-focused way. But, you know, we're, again, very open to not just ways in which the work done to date could be improved and what we might be missing, but but regardless, committed to a focus on utilizing these funds in a way that acknowledge that with existing resources supporting our regional parks, which are cornerstones of our system, we now have an opportunity, a growing and very exciting opportunity to invest beyond that. So.
Absolutely. And I'm looking at another additional 15 million at least in ARPA funds that are also capital projects in parks. They're all over across the city that are, so this isn't, I also want the public to understand that we're really grateful, of course, to the federal relief package, but we're spending money, I think, out of Pago. I think there are additional grant funds, right? There are other places that we do get grants, right? We've got DCNR funds, we've got Kaboom Playground Funds, there's the kind of gaming funds at the county, I can't remember what those are called.
When I, they're called GEDTF, Gaming and Economic Development and Tourism Funds.
Those funds are going to our parks. We just recently approved $2 million from the Heinz Endowments for Homewood Football Field.
I should I should make clear.
Happy about that.
When I listed projects in which we're investing, those were not projects that were solely utilizing parks tax funds for those investments. In fact, they're utilizing a combination of parks tax, bond, Pago, grant, and other funds. They are projects that happened to be on the the list as it was articulated at the time that the vote passed that have been supported since then to make that connection. But they're not respect, they're not reflective only of parks tax investments, but overall city investments. On the question of equitable access, again, Director, if you want to speak to to the way in which the department thinks about that most broadly, please.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. You know, I think you raised some very wonderful points. I also want to, you know, Director Vargas is here as well, and I know she's going to have very distinct thoughts on this, so I also want to invite her to respond as well because she and I partner on on some of those equitable improvements and accessible improvements. I think you raised a very. I think you raise a very interesting point, you know, vis-à-vis the, you know, aforementioned location of women and single, single-parent homes and, you know, access to a park and that those two maps not. I see that process kind of, from my perspective, being wholly distinct and separate from the process that was entailed underneath the equitable investment strategy as, as supported by the Philadelphia consultant. Mostly that the, you know, the, the question was, you know, parks that exist currently that we have a responsibility for. I think that your question is also apt and needs to be fully explored, and I certainly would be highly supportive of that. I think that there's no shortage of work that needs to be done to provide our parks to be more equitable and accessible, the ones that do exist currently, as well as expanding the portfolio to those who also have a demonstrated need and don't have that same safe access.
And just to put a further point on it, I mean, it's widely known that neighborhoods farther from parks usually have lower value and cheaper rent. And that's where our kind of poorest households can afford to live, right? And so, and that's the opposite of what we should be striving for. We should be striving for having the parks for the households, especially that are lower-resourced and in more need. And so, I don't think we're there. I don't think we're there with the, the plan that was put forward by the Parks Conservancy. And so, we should look a little more closely, a lot more closely, at kind of where are people who need parks, how far are they from parks, and what we can do about it. And that's a completely different question, I think, than what's in front of us now.
Especially with the opportunity that presents us as a, a city that was built for nearly 700,000 people, that currently has slightly over 300,000 occupants, you know? While we, as administration, and I think council shares this point of view, and the city as a whole shares this point of view, are planning for and expecting growth, we can at the same time acknowledge that we have a fairly unique opportunity in front of us right now to realign development patterns and land use patterns to more equitably distribute those resources when we have, for lack of a better term, some excess space, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Right, when people are too far, you know, not a 10-minute walk is the kind of, the way we were describing it back in 2019 of trying to achieve. So, I just was, I'm, I'm supportive of the allocations here, and I don't want to discount anyone who does live near one of our current parks, who has seen it being in sad repair, because we do, we have a lot of parks. I'm lucky in my district to have not just a Rad Park, but 14 smaller parks, and definitely some of them, citizens have done a lot of work themselves, completely changed. I always bring up Duncan Park, where we removed the playground structure, and now there's a food forest and a completely, a completely different space with a cooperative agreement with the local organization who's supporting it and that is read into the record and, on record. But that, we do, we think about where, where we, where, what our people need and put that in front of us and look at equity that way, so.
And while not the subject of this hearing directly, I just, you know, we, again, enjoyed a strong partnership with RAD around other types of non-city, well, city taxpayers certainly pay them through the sales tax, but the ways in which we've been able to deploy and invest RAD funds in our regional parks has seen increasing return as we've reinvested in our core capabilities, and we, we look forward to that continued partnership as well.
Wonderful, wonderful, I appreciate it. I think that's all I have, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. And I just have a few things. I mean, I hear all these conversations and all the comments around the table. For me, look, I mean, I don't want the park tax, and I really didn't like Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy, and I really don't like any organization, a lot of organizations, I like a lot, I like some. So, I'm just gonna say that right now, but I also think that there is a need, there's a real need for them. I think they are good at leveraging private dollars that we are not. And I do think that we need to, honestly, I think part of the problems, as I'm hearing comments, is we didn't manage that relationship very well. We shouldn't have that many agreements with them. We shouldn't have them setting the priority for the city of Pittsburgh. We should be setting that with our residents. And I, I think that if we redefine that relationship, I think it could be beneficial to everyone. But I think it has to be us who manages it better, a partnership better. But, and since then, since the park tax, there's been a lot of great people that went to work for Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy, so I'm starting to like them a little bit again. But I just want to say that it's truly, the reason I say that all that is because I'm not, we have to do this and we have to have it the same way, and we don't have to continue it, what I think is we need to relook at it through a different lens and try to understand how, you know, what we think would be beneficial to the residents. Do you have some thoughts that you want to say?
Well, I, I just wanted to agree, you know, that, you know, I, I meet monthly with Catherine Kreshe, the Executive Director of the Parks Conservancy, and Ross Chapman, their Chief Operating Officer, both of whom are City of Pittsburgh alums. I think they're in the, they're behind me, I can't, I can't quite see them right now.
Yeah, Hersch, Hersch.
Oh, yes, thank you, and Hersch Mastine.
And Ross, did we say Ross? Did you say Ross?
I didn't say him, but I'll say him now. Oh, no, Ross Chapman, yes, I did. My, my point is that there, there are many great folks who work there, who through their prior service to the city are, I think, I don't, I would never question their dedication to the sort of civic good. And, and as Councilwoman Gross mentioned, we have a longstanding relationship with the Conservancy as documented in a large number of contractual relationships that continue to this day and, and continue to be, I think, beneficial to us. So, so I agree with you entirely that this is not a question of intention, it's a question of prioritization. And, you know, our view, which I think is consistent with the expressed intent of the voters at the time the tax was passed, but also consistent with the prior intention expressed by this council and even the prior administration, that the question is not whether partnership is valuable. I think that's, that's undisputed. The question is what is, in the, the immediate term, the highest and best use of public tax dollars as collected through the Parks Tax? And in an environment in which public investment in our parks system has been so lacking for so long, it seemed, it seems and remains clear to us that the most rewarding investment we can make is in rebuilding our capability as the public, as the city, to do our own work ourselves. That does not preclude opportunities for, for future partnership. In fact, I think it creates a stronger basis and foundation for future partnership, once we've caught up on our own basic responsibilities to the public. You know, at, at the same time, we'll continue to work in those ways that present themselves on, on partnerships that we can't fully undertake on our own, and nothing in this proposal closes the door to that in the same way that those partnerships weren't impossible and in fact flourished prior to having a Parks Tax. So, it's not a question about whether we can partner or whether we're willing to partner. It's, it's a question about how public dollars as collected by the public from taxpayers can be best spent in the next couple of years. And so, if we limit our point of view to that much, I would say, more focused question, there is room for reasonable disagreement, but, but that's really where our position lies, not, not in the, the sort of wide nature of the question about partnership where we all think are all agreed, but rather what, what's the best thing for the city to do next year and the four years following that.
So, I just think it would also be good, I think that because they have built up that organization so much, it'd be nice to see them partnered with some of the smaller organizations, some green, you know, oriented types of organizations, and see them working a little bit and mentoring them a little, you know, some of, some of that, to some extent. But I, but I do want to say, I have to clarify some, a few things. On this, according to this list on the capital budget, I just want to make sure, and you mentioned Sheridan Park, but it's not listed on here, but that is, Director?
That's coming out of the Park Reconstruction Fund, paid with bond money.
And how much is it?
$1.5 million for 2023.
And what's, for the five-year?
I don't have that in front of me right now, but I can pull that up. So, Madam President, if I could just say, just to reiterate again, the list of parks that I gave was not solely Parks Tax-funded projects, but rather projects that are prioritized in the 2018, 2019 equity plan. And of them, I see Townsend Park, of the, I'm sorry, I should clarify, of the ones in which we already have completed work or in the process of doing work in your district, I see Townsend Park, Sheridan Park, those are the two on my list in front of me right now.
We're still doing Sheridan, we're doing Oakwood Park, you've done a lot of the playgrounds, you're doing Grandview.
Oh, yeah.
Well, it's, it's Emerald View Park, you're doing...
There are many other parks that aren't on this list because they weren't on their list.
So, I just want people to realize, when they see this number, that's not the whole number for District Two, it just looks at, you know, this paper here. But I just want people to understand, because sometimes people just look at one sheet, they think they have the whole story.
In most cases, it's not even the, it's not even the entire investment in any one project. For example, I think there's $700,000 in Parks Tax Funds in McKinley that was recently reported on in a story. That's 700,000 out of a $2.5 million over all investments, so 700,000 in Parks Tax Funds combined with $1.8 million in other funds. So, not an example in your district, just the one that popped up mind to me, but to underscore your point, that we are combining partial funding from the Parks Tax with other city resources in most of these projects.
Right, so, because, so we're putting a lot of, we're still putting in the money that we had initially said we would do, and that's what people were asking, were we just going to use the 10 million? No, we're, we're still doing, we still dedicated a lot of funds towards our parks, so it makes them a priority for us. And I think we all realized how important the parks were, especially during COVID, when that's all kids and families could do was go to the parks. So, I think that we have a real commitment there, but I do want to see us work out some arrangements, some agreements where we can feel like the residents have a say and that the city has control. And I think at the same time, you know, we want to say how much we value what Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy has done in many areas. That doesn't mean I agree with everything, because there's a lot I don't, but I do think now we have a great team there that we can really work with them. There are people that know our area, there are people that know the city, and they know how crazy council can get when they make us angry. So, you know, so I think that we have good partners there to work with, so I, I'm looking forward to that, and I have nothing further. Do you have anything you want to say to, to wrap it up?
I don't. Director Vargas, just since you didn't get a chance, is anything you'd like to say?
No, I'm good.
No, thank you, Councilwoman.
Okay, and I just really want to thank all of our Parks crews. Andrea just walked in, I thanked her earlier, she wasn't here, but I just, she does an amazing job with the, with all the park work that she's doing in my district and across the city. Do either of you have any ending comments? Okay, with that said, can I have a motion to recess?
Motion to recess. Second.
Meeting's recessed, thank you.